Twenty twenty-two. Would like to request confirmation that Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice of the meeting was provided.
Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Vice Chair Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Farber.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Sell.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Chair Hay. Commissioner Gilmore. We have a quorum of five.
Okay, so that moves us on to approval of the minutes for the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
I move we approve the minutes of the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so I'd say Mr. Farber got in first.
I didn't say anything.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, five oh. That will take us to new business, and that would take us to application CU twenty-two dash four.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. I will be presenting the staff report for this agenda item. So this agenda item involves an application for the Library Sports Bar and Grill. And that particular property is located at the southeast corner of Ellsworth and South Santa Fe. And some, some history behind what's being requested is in the mid and late nineteen nineties, the city of Salina had a situation occur where some of the bars and restaurants were having outdoor activities and entertainment, whether it be live bands or other amplified sound on their patio areas. And it got to the point with one particular property especially, the J.C.'s, which is now the Speakeasy, there were over eleven complaints over a three-year period. And one of the complaints was accompanied by reports of obnoxious sound over a quarter of a mile away. And so at that point, the planning commission and city commission decided that they needed to address this situation. And so what they did is, after multiple study sessions, they determined that they're going to create a conditional use permit for what they call outdoor amplified sound. So what that does is it doesn't necessarily prohibit or, or permit outdoor amplified sound. What it does is it makes it conditional, meaning that you have to have a public hearing with the planning commission in order to get permission to have that type of, of sound in the outdoor area. And that, along with that public hearing, that there is notification that is sent out to all of the residents within five hundred feet of the property, which, which is what we did here. We sent out notice to all of the individuals that have property within five hundred feet of the library. And so that's, that's kind of the background on the outdoor amplified sound. The background on this specific property is it was originally developed in nineteen sixty-eight and had multiple reconfigurations that have happened over time, with a convenience store being constructed in nineteen sixty-nine, which converted to a mortuary in nineteen eighty-five. And then from there, most recently, it was converted from a mortuary to a sports bar and grill, which is the library. The, the conversion, as part of that conversion, which happened in two thousand twenty, the site was rather tight, and so there was intentional work by the project designer to create a site plan and floor plan that would meet the requirements for life safety measures, as well as off-street parking for the zoning regulations, for the off-street parking regulations for the city of Salina. And so what that means is the design specifically limited the site to forty-six seats and a maximum occupant load of forty-nine people. And that was determined or created because of the number of parking stalls that are on the site. So the site is rather tight. There are seventeen off-street parking stalls on the site. And that does not count any of the on-street parking that you might have in the neighborhood or along South Santa Fe. The code, the off-street parking regulations don't count on-street parking towards the occupant load or available parking for individual businesses. It only credits the off-street parking that is actually on the site of the business, towards that business. And so those seventeen parking spaces really drove the design of the library bar and grill when it originally opened. So part of the limitations to that grill, restaurant, bar, is that they were limited to patio, a patio area on the, I'm gonna get it pulled up here, on the west side of their building. So the building itself has an overhang that is fenced in, if you've, if you've been there or seen it. And they were limited to three seats, or three tables, with six seats, two seats per table on the exterior of the building. There is also an outdoor storage area that was enclosed with a solid fence on the north side. And there's also a area for the, for the enclosure, for the dumpster, also on the north side, as well as the cooler and freezer. So as part of the original development, the way that the site was designed, when it was converted from a mortuary to a restaurant bar and grill, was to have this screened-in area for some storage, the dumpster, as well as the cooler and the freezer. And the reason that is brought up is because that, that has since changed, and we'll get into that. So as part of the approval of the site, because the site was tight, the staff did have a number of special conditions. One is that the limitation that the original plan had, which was forty-six seats and a maximum occupant load of forty-nine people, was not to be exceeded. In other words, they were not to add any tables, they were not to add any chairs, they were not to add any additional seating area because they didn't have sufficient off-street parking to do that. Another condition that was added is that no physical modifications or alterations to the indoor or outdoor dining areas would be allowed without an off-street parking variance, again, because of the limitations of the off-street parking on the site. There was also a general note that was shared with the, the owners of the bar and grill, noting that we had received complaints before the certificative occupancy was issued for the library bar and grill prior to its opening from neighbors concerned about some of the audible sounds that were emanating from the property. And so they were put on notice that any outdoor amplified sound requires a conditional use permit, which is this process here. So we did give them notice of that upfront, due to concerns that some of the neighbors were expressing before they even opened. So it, when the applicant applied for this conditional use request, staff did do a site visit, and as part of that site visit, we identified a number of things that need to be considered. When we go through a conditional use permit process, the first item on the checklist, so to speak, is the compliance or adherence to the zoning regulations. And so when we went out to our site, we did identify that there were a number of changes that we were unaware of that needed to be brought to the board's attention as it relates to their decision here today. One of the, the items that we've, we've noted is that there was a number of additional outs, outside seats that were added. And we'll show some pictures of that. So before, originally, there were six outdoor seats. Now there are a number of seats underneath, additional seats underneath the patio on the west. And the storage area that was on the north side of the, of the structure has morphed into a patio area as well with, with chairs. So it's no longer storage, but rather is additional seating. And in total, what we have counted is that the outdoor seating area, which was six seats, has, has climbed to twenty-eight seats now. So we, we have a, an increase of twenty-two additional seats that have been added. Six of those are in the west patio area, and sixteen of those are in the north patio area that you see in the photograph here. So that would be a concern and a nonconformance to the zoning regulations. Another item of concern is that the parking stalls in the right-of-way, public right-of-way, or the area in the public right-of-way on South Santa Fe is being used for on-street parking but isn't striped. And so if that's going to be used for parking, then that area would also need to be marked as either parallel or angled parking stalls. And there's also, when we went out, we identified that above the storage area for the freezer and refrigerator, there's been a structure that, in addition to the building, that's been added. And you can see it a little bit here. Right there, you can see the roof. Right there, it's a little easier to see. And then the best is actually, kind of from, from the east, you can see how it extends out from the building and covers that freezer and refrigerator area. And that would be a, a building addition that was constructed without a building permit. And it also encroaches into the front yard setback area along Ellsworth. So it's, it's not only a structure that was built without a permit, but it, it doesn't meet the setback requirement set out by the zoning regulations. There is also a pole sign and wall sign that, that was added to the site, both without sign permits. I didn't get a picture of the pole sign, I should have, but there's also a permanent wall sign on the front that says KW Coyotes, as they have, it's, it's, they're, one of their main attractions is their proximity to the Kansas Westland campus. And I believe they have some arrangements with the university and, and some of their athletic programs, but the applicant can speak more to that. So they have a permanent wall sign in KW Coyotes, in addition to a pole sign for Library Sports Bar and Grill that was erected. The sign regulations, in addition to requiring that sign permits be applied for and approved for any permanent signs, there's also limitations on the amount of sign area you can have, and that's four square feet per linear foot of building frontage. And while staff did not go through the effort of tallying up all the square footage of sign area on the building, we did take pictures and, and we do note that there is a substantial amount of sign area, and that it's, it's very possible that that amount of signage, even though a lot of its temporary banner signage exceeds the amount of sign area that you're allowed to have. So in addition to those items and the, the addition that encroaches into the front yard setback area, there's also a storage building that has been brought onto the site, and that also encroaches into the front yard setback area and is not separated from the permanent addition that was erected over the freezer and refrigerator by ten feet. So the regulations, the zoning regulations require that accessory structures are located outside of the front yard setback area, which is in the front twenty-five feet of the property, and that they are setback from the principal structure at least ten feet, so that you have appropriate fire separations if a building were to catch fire, that it, it would reduce the amount of time it would take for that fire to expand into the building, the permanent structure, which might be inhabited by people. And then there's also a trash enclosure requirement. This property, when it was redeveloped and converted from the mortuary to a bar and grill restaurant, it, it invoked and triggered adherence to the landscape regulations, meaning they had to add landscaping along Santa Fe, and that their dumpsters had to be fully enclosed. Now, originally, they were fully enclosed. If we look at the, the site plan and the floor plan, it was enclosed within that fence on the north side of the structure. However, since that time, there are two dumpster, and neither one of them are enclosed, and they're both are in the front yard setback along Ellsworth. And then lastly, the last item, the last nonconformity, rather, is that the landscaping that was installed as part of this project has, has either died or has gone missing and would need to be replaced. So that's, those are the nonconformities or the areas in which the property currently does not meet the zoning regulations. So that's, that's important to note, as that's one of the criteria that is necessary for approving a conditional use permit. The second criteria that we look at is the welfare and convenience of the public, in which the applicant believes that the proposed outdoor amplified sound will allow customers the ability to follow sporting events and, and listen to live music while they're outside, if they go outside to smoke because of the inability to smoke indoors with local city ordinances. Staff would agree that, that that could be viewed as a positive for customers of the library. However, one of the questions that the planning commission is to consider is whether or not the location of this particular proposed bar with outdoor speakers is appropriate, and whether or not it should be allowed, given the context of its location and proximity to the residential houses within the, the neighborhood. So that would be something that the planning commission would have to consider with the welfare and convenience of the public. Looking at the impact and injury on surrounding properties and the domination of the neighborhood, the applicant states that the proposed outdoor speaker system will have programmable maximum volume settings, as well as automatic off settings that would prevent any inappropriate sound from emanating into the neighborhood. So staff has, in your report, has shared some details or some thoughts on decibel levels and sound in general. And so a quiet residential area typically has about forty decibels of sound in it at any given time. Human conversation, as such, would happen on an outdoor patio or inside of a restaurant area, is typically between fifty-five and sixty decibels. Loud music on a radio is about sixty-five decibels, where loud music from amplified sound for like, like a rock and roll music is typically around one hundred to one hundred and ten decibels. Chainsaw is a hundred and twenty-five decibels, and that's where you, that's, that hundred and twenty-five level is, is kind of where you start seeing ear pain and potential impairment of your ears. And so that's, that's kind of a threshold of, of damage potentially. And then a jet engine taking off is a hundred and fifty decibels, where the loudest maximum decibel level you could have is a hundred and ninety. So that's just to give you some context of sound and, and decibel levels. So speaking decibel levels is, is around fifty-five, sixty. If you get above sixty-five, you're getting into what a lot of people might call noise or loud sound. Now, so sound waves can be deflected and focused, so there's, there's certain things you can do to direct sound in a certain area, buffer it from entering other areas. Those are things that can be done. If you go to exterior stages or outdoor events or outdoor stages, such as we have in Oakdale Park, you'll notice that sometimes there's like a shell-type stage, and the purpose of that is to funnel and direct sound in a certain direction, so that it doesn't go where you don't want it to go, and that it is directed and amplified where you want it to go. One of the advantages with a permanent speaker system for outdoor sound is that it's, you're able to make it more predictable, you're able to make it more uniform in its levels, where other forms of outdoor amplified sound, it can be more challenging. For instance, if you were to have an outdoor amplified sound permit where somebody's wants to bring in live entertainment or bands, or DJs that have their own equipment, those are all, those all have variables that are a little less known, and they can be a little bit trickier to administer limitations on. So one of the advantages with what's being proposed here is that we do have set speakers that we know the location, we know the direction that they're pointing, and according to the applicant, volume levels could be prescribed through a computer programming system. And not only that, but you could also have programmed, prescribed, established operation windows. So for instance, you could have it where the sound can only be turned on from noon till nine at night, if that's something that the planning commission is interested in. Now, that's, that's something that, that sounds very helpful. Staff would still have some questions about that and, and seek clarification from the applicant on how that's managed with them as, as the operators of the restaurant, and how they're able to prevent employees or other shift managers from turning it up or turning it on in inappropriate times at inappropriate levels. So that would be something that we would like the applicant to speak in a little more detail on. And public utilities and services, because this is an existing bar and an existing site, there aren't really any changes to the site, and it already has sufficient public utilities and services. Traffic access and parking. Parking is one of the big issues with this site, because of, of how tight it is. And from its, from its very beginning, it's been the challenge that, that the site has had to deal with, and that they only have the seventeen off-street parking spaces, and that limits their capacity in terms of the amount of people they can have and the number of seats they can have. So if they were to increase their occupant load or their seating above what they originally approved to have, which is the forty-six total seats with a maximum occupant load of forty-nine, it could have the consequences of creating additional required off-street parking, which they don't have space for. It could also create additional exiting signs and panic hardware requirements, as well as an additional restroom with fixtures being required for the rest, for the restaurant. So in order for the planning commission to approve the requested conditional use permit, the applicant will first need to reduce the number of outdoor seats on the west patio area to no more than six, which was, which was, is what was originally approved. And they'd have to reconvert or revert that north patio area back to a storage area and remove all the seating from that site. So basically, they'd have to reverse all of the additions that they've made in terms of their additional seating that they've created. Staff has a number of alternatives for the planning commission to consider. The first is that they could approve the conditional use permit application filed by Mr. Campbell on behalf of the Library Sports Bar and Grill, allowing the bar and grill to have outdoor amplified sound within five hundred feet of the residential district. Number two is they could approve the conditional use permit, allowing outdoor sound subject to any specific conditions and or revisions to their site plan or the way that the site currently operates. Number three, you could postpone consideration if you feel additional information is needed to reach a decision. And number four, you could deny the application if required findings of fact cannot be made that would allow outdoor amplified sound or cause injury to the surrounding properties of approved in this location. Staff, again, would note that because of the eleven nonconformities that we've identified, that we would recommend that the planning commission postpone action on this request until all the existing nonconformities can be addressed, or that you deny the application and have the applicant resubmit the conditional use permit application when all of the nonconformities have been addressed. One of the issues with postponement is that we do have to have a specific date and time of a hearing that we postpone that reconsideration of the action to. And so one of the challenges with that is the number of nonconformities and, and items that need to be dealt with by the applicant, one of which may potentially involve requesting a board, a parking variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So in order for them to have the amount of seating that is currently there on site today, they would either need to acquire additional off-street parking from a site that's allowed to have off-street parking as a use within six hundred feet of their property, or they need to apply for a parking variance with the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Board of Zoning Appeals would have to find that the site has sufficient reasons and justification for a parking variance. So those are a number of items that could, could take some time and could take, you know, forty-five, sixty days, maybe more. So postponing it to a specific date could be challenging, so I just wanted to note that. Because we do have to have a specific date if we do postpone. So with that, staff will take any questions that the board may have and, and offer whatever clarification we can if there's, if there's thoughts.
Any questions for staff? I get, I have one. So on page five, the, number nine, so the accessory storage building, so that's within the setback, and then that building has to be fra, ten feet from the additional building that was, or the building addition that was put on without the permit, right?
Correct. You're understanding that correctly.
Two points, it doesn't mean.
Yeah, so there's two different setbacks that, that needs to hear to. One is being setback away from Ellsworth, the property line, not the street, not the curb, but the actual property line, twenty-five feet. And then it has to be twen, at least ten feet from the principal structure in addition to that.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, if not, then we'd like to, comments from the applicant? Is the applicant here? And if you could please state your name and address.
Eric Campbell.
When you get to the podium, please, so they can get it.
Eric Campbell, fifteen oh one Colton Court.
So.
So some of these things we knew coming in and we've addressed, and some of them brought to light that we didn't, that we weren't aware we needed to address. So because of that, we feel like we need that time to sort through some of these additional concerns with the city. We've got appointments set up with Sean Pilcher. They're trying to get that meeting set up to see what, what we got to do to move forward with this. So at that time, I don't know if we actually withdraw, so that you guys don't waste any more time on it, on the matter, without all these points being addressed. So I guess that's where.
So what points have you addressed?
So we have a system put in. Our sound system has locks on it to actually prevent that outdoor sound. We've actually put them back up, so that we took them down. Originally, we're in, we took them down. We've put them back up, just kind of trying to play with some of them, because we never had an opportunity to do that before the meeting, and we were able to lock out times. It's actually done in the program itself, so you can go and turn that dial as loud as you want, and it won't, it won't go. And it'll shut off at a certain time. So and we can, we're kind of learning the shut-off is a little harder than the, than the maximum decibel settings. So we can, we can control that. There's actually three zones. There's an inside zone, right and left, and then an outside zone. So we can control that. That's the one thing that we addressed coming, you know, in originally. That, you know, that's, of course, being simple, we're just thinking, just the sound. So the other, the other issues, we have purchased a piece of property that is just down the block. It's a lot, a house that had burnt down there. My understanding is that Santa Fe was moving at one time during the sixties to convert that to commercial property, that the idea was that you could be dual-zoned, and then once you went commercially, you didn't go back. They were trying to, at that time, trying to turn Santa Fe into a commercial, not residential area, which is why, of course, the Quick Shop went in there, or the Quick Trip went in there, and why we're there. So I don't know yet how that's zoned or how that works. I know the people that owned the property were unable to rebuild the house. There was a dupe. There was a duplex on there and they were unable to rebuild it because of those zoning requirements back when it caught on fire. So, that's something I'm working on right now with, with the city, getting meetings set up to see what that property does for us as far as for off, off-road parking. So, those are the two that we've addressed.
You've already purchased that property?
Yes, yes. It's actually, if you're familiar with that corner, it's actually one lot over, kind of over the little corner restaurant or now it's a bake shop. It's right behind that. It's an open grassed area there, so.
What would your intention be for that property?
For further parking, yeah. But we got to go through the, with the zoning commission and see how to get that rezoned or how to, what we really need to do at that point.
Eric, which property?
It'd be, just come on, let's see.
Here's Santa Fe.
Yeah, right there, it's that, see that square, come this way, come down towards the bottom. Nope. It's this green lot right here. This lot right here. There was a duplex here that had burnt down. So, that's the property that we purchased for. We knew when we went in, we've grown, obviously. We've got a pretty good, tight relationship with the college and there's a lot of alumni come in when they have, of course, events and then, of course, the recruiting, they come in a lot. So, we do have a lot of out of town. So, we've grown a lot. I mean, there's no doubt in that, so.
And then, so.
That would be something that we're looking at trying to address there.
Okay. So, Dustin, on the off-street parking, how close does it has to, have to be to the property, did you say?
Five.
600 feet.
600 feet, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're right there within it.
I guess the question is how many, it depends on your design on how many spaces you can add and if you can add enough for all of the existing seating that's been added, that, that would be a question we'd have to work with Eric on.
Yeah, and these are the things that we kind of knew, that these two things were an issue and so those, these are how we're moving forward to address those. Some of the other stuff, you know, we're going to have to sit down and meet with them at the meeting and I, I never have heard back from Sean yet on when that meeting can be set. I think I believe it was last week that I'd visited with him on this.
So, I just, I didn't, I just need to know your intention. Are you intending to withdraw this application for the time?
I don't know. I think that's the right thing to do because really, I mean, it's either you guys reject it or we withdraw it or, you know, because we've got a lot of stuff to address, I believe. I don't know. I don't want to waste your time.
Well, we could, we could postpone it to a certain date. Do you have an idea of date?
Like he said, there's a lot of hoops and loops to jump through, you know, to me. I, I wouldn't be able to tell, you know, tell you anything. I'd hate to come back up here and not be prepared. I mean, I'd hate to come into something and not, and waste everybody's time and not be prepared like we are now.
Just for, for your reference, are you aware of the letters that have been sent?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. And so, question back to Dustin or Dean, so if, I mean, everybody is here already. We go through whether he withdraws or whether it gets postponed.
This is an advertised public hearing, so even if that's the stated intent, we would wait till we heard from members of the public and from the written correspondence that you have there and then when that's concluded, then you can decide to accept the withdrawal or deny it or do, or postpone it to August or whatever you think is, is the correct tool, but you probably should. We've advertised the hearing and it's, it should be held.
So, one more question then on that. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. If we deny it, does he then have an opportunity to reapply or if it's been denied?
If, if he denies, if it goes forward, is pushed forward and is denied, he has to wait 180 days to refile. If it's withdrawn and you accept that withdrawal, then there's no, there's no timeframe on that.
But is there a timeframe for the amount of time ahead that we can postpone the meeting?
No. It's just that the, as Dustin pointed out, the, the risk is, let's say you postpone it to your first meeting in August, then we're going to re-notify everybody, we're going to convene the first meeting of August. There's a chance that we don't have everything ironed out by that first meeting in August, which means postponing it again. There's nothing wrong with that. It's just that it, it then becomes a more difficult item to track and then it's, it becomes difficult for neighbors and all to keep track of the various postponements and all. But that is, to keep the application alive and to allow for it to be considered at a later date, you could look at August or September or whatever and, and have it come back at that time.
I, I think it's.
And that saves a denial, it saves a reapplication, but there is, the, the purpose of the waiting six months is that so you don't, you don't have an applicant who's denied and then immediately reapplies and reapplies and wears out the neighborhood. So, the idea is to have a six-month waiting period before you submit the same application.
I, I think it's important for, you know, since this is an advertised hearing, I think it's important also for Mr. Campbell to go ahead and hear the comments from the public so that he's aware of those and can address those in, in advance. Yeah. Now, I mean.
And as far as the timeline, I mean, we're not, this isn't the end of the world. This is just a convenience we felt like was good for our business, you know? So, it's not like you don't have water or anything crazy like that, you know?
So, just to clarify, your intention is to withdraw this application and would that be the best situation for you?
Yeah, I don't know that it really much matters. I guess I don't know the procedures to go back through. I mean.
Well, just to kind of go back through.
The primary, the primary difference would be if you, they've already submitted an application, they've already paid a fee.
Right.
That if you postpone it till August or September, then the application is just in hiatus and it, it gets pulled back out. If it's withdrawn, then it's essentially closed out and then they can reapply, which is a new application and a new fee.
Right.
So, that, that's, that's the primary difference. If you postpone, you're keeping it.
Yep.
Alive. If they say, well, we don't want to withdraw, we want an up or down vote and it's denied, then they have to wait six months. If it's postponed, then it would just come back on your agenda at that meeting and it's either ready or not ready.
With the withdrawal option that Mr. Campbell has offered, the one advantage is that you wouldn't come back before you until they're ready and you wouldn't run the risk of having a scheduled meeting with a public hearing and then everyone else having to come back only to not quite be ready. With this being something that's interested in by the, by the neighbors, something that the neighbors are interested in, that might be something to consider as the withdrawal route, just so that you don't have that scenario where everybody shows back up again and we're not quite ready.
It's whatever's convenient. I mean, it's not the end of the world for us.
Okay. Any other comments?
You have any more questions for me?
Any other?
No, I think that's a fair statement to allow the applicant to hear some of the concerns of the neighborhood because then that gives them an opportunity to address those.
Yep, okay, thank you.
And that is what we will move on to. We're going to take comments from the public. If anybody wants to speak to this issue, when you do, when you get to the podium, please state your name and address.
Hello, my name's Jerry Boyer and this is my wife, Jan, and we live at 123 East Ellsworth. And Jan and I have lived there, she's lived there for 44 years, I've lived there for 41. And I want to thank you all for having this hearing. I know sometimes these aren't very pleasant, but I appreciate it. I got three questions to start with. I'd like to ask just a few of them very quickly. Who does a citizen call when you have a noise ordinance that's being ignored? I know that you guys may not be able to answer that, but I just want it put down at some place. The reason I ask this question is we've, when the bar first went in, they had speakers put up almost before they had occupancy and the laborers that were working on the bar was loud music. And so, I went over and talked to the gentleman and, you know, asked him about it. So, last night when I walked by, as this fellow just alluded to, it was playing last night. So, if they don't have a conditional permit right now, but they're playing it last night. So, once they get a conditional use permit, will they follow that? I know that he alluded to that he has an automatic system that's going to turn it off on time and it's going to turn it down, but when Sweet Home Alabama comes on, you can't help but to turn it up. Secondly, can you name one bar in Salina, Kansas that's butted up next to a family residential neighborhood? I'll name them for you real quick because I've been thinking about this a lot. And Blue Sky, nope. Chucks, Maggie Mae's, Blind Pig, Larry's, Old Chicago, Speakeasy, Wild Wings, Big Nose Kate. Nope, not one of them. There's one in Salina, Kansas that's in a neighborhood and that's The Hideaway. It's four city lots from the closest neighbor on one side and six from the other side. Why is that? Probably because Salina's been really good about not putting a bar in a family neighborhood. Thirdly, where do each one of y'all live? Your addresses. Would you want a bar within 45 feet? This room we're sitting in right now is less than 45 feet and that bar is right there and that music's playing and it's playing loudly when they were allowed to do it. He said he took them down. He took them down because there were so many complaints. Then, I'm going to talk about a couple of things real quickly because I know there's a lot of folks that want to talk. When the bar was being built, I walked over and the guy that was building the back bar, carpenter, I said, what's this going to be? He said, well, it's going to be a bar and a grill. I cried and cringed and he said, no, it's going to be like Applebee's. It's just like Applebee's. I thought, great. It's not like Applebee's because I've been at Applebee's, all y'all have been at Applebee's. I never had anybody urinate on my pickup truck at Applebee's. I never had them urinate on the fence in the back or the side of the building. I never had broken bottles and trash. At first, they were really good. I even complimented them one time. Every morning, somebody come out and picked up beer bottles. Shouldn't even have the beer bottles there, but they did. I thought, man, that's great. You're picking up your beer bottles, you're going to be a great steward. That ended. I don't know if a short staff or what it was, but now every time my wife and I take a walk, we pick up a minimum one beer bottle. And we thought about collecting and bringing them, but then that would be a little bit over the top. So, anyway, I wanted to also tell you a little bit, they alluded about the parking and I know that they're trying to work and maybe find a different way to, to get the parking in. That's been an issue since the day this bar opened. I know it says 47 people with 17 parking spots. I can't do math very well. I live about 90 steps from the front of that bar and the front of my house has somebody in front of it many times a week. At 8:00 at night, three weeks ago, my driveway was blocked. I happened to be pulling up as he was walking from the bar. I pulled over and waited for him to get out of my way. He didn't. So, I got out of my truck or on my car to go towards my pickup truck, which is parked in front of my house. And the only reason I park in front of my house now the way I do is to keep people from parking there. And as I walked up, he flipped me off and called me some names, rolled his wind up and sped off. Now, I know that you can't control what people do, especially when they've been drinking and I wasn't about to get in a fight with a guy over it, but it, it leads to what is happening with this particular bar. And I don't know if every other bar has these issues, maybe they do, but it definitely, we have them. The other thing I wanted to bring up is two things. Motorcycles screaming down the road, we got children in the neighborhood, loud music on the, on the motorcycles. And the last thing I want to bring up, property values. You guys have access to this probably more than what I would. Six houses have sold in our block since that bar went in and all of them sold for less than what the county appraiser had it at, by a considerable amount. And I'm sure you guys can look into how much, but it was significant. A house that was valued at 78 sold for 55. The one across the street, same value, 56, so on and so forth. So, property values have been impacted by this, there's no denying it. Now, let's talk about the outdoor speakers, which we're here for. Like I said, last night, I went there, no permit. And this, this bar is facing my house. I live at 123, the speakers on the north side, which weren't supposed to be there in the first place, literally ricochet right into my house. And I spoke with the city commissioner when it first happened and he told me to get ahold of the zoning commission, which also told me to get ahold of the city manager. So, I did. And so, I went through the line of progression, what I was supposed to do, and they told me, call the police. They don't have a conditional use permit, call the police. I couldn't even get to the phone and my next door neighbor, Carla and Mike, called. Every time she called, she texted me. 11:30, 11:45, I got some dates that this all happened. And I believe that gentleman over there alluded to that this happened in the beginning. And then, all of a sudden, the speakers were down and gone. I thought, man, great. And then, they came back and I get a letter saying that they want to put them back up and that they're going to control them. They've shown by their actions that, that they will not be neighbors of good faith in keeping noise level down. They've showed it in everything they've done by constructing things they shouldn't have, by building things they shouldn't have, even putting signs up they shouldn't have. They've already proven they're not going to follow the rules. They haven't yet. And then, lastly, in closing, I feel that my pursuit of happiness is being infringed upon and that something as simple as opening my windows so that I can get some fresh air at night when I go to bed, I simply can't do. And I feel every business should thrive, but not at the expense of families needing peace and quiet. Thank you for your time.
And I'm Jan Boyer.
Speak.
I don't speak very well, but I just want to say, in our neighborhood, we have young people in there. They have babies. My next door neighbor has three toddlers and then next door to them, there's, there's several little ones that are there too because they come and go. I mean, they're grandkids and stuff, but they're there every day. They babysit them. And then, across the street from me, there's a little bitty guy about two and then right there at the yellow house, it's two-story, right behind them. Some of those have teenage girls and you can't control the patrons, but they're the ones that have been hitting up on these 15, 16-year-old girls. And it's, it's horrible or they decide to urinate in the alley because maybe they can't get into the bathroom there or, or whatever. You know all the things. We've all been to bars before. So, we are, we're trying to stay a family oriented. I don't want to discourage these young people to move out of our area. They're very important to us and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hi. Dan Atchison, we live at 134 East Minneapolis. We're kind of on the edge of the circle there, but all I'm asking is that you consider the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood and that they have really shown by their actions that they're not following the rules. So, I'm asking you to deny this application. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Loy at 229 East Ellsworth, I got, I got. What is, I ride the City Go Bus and that bar, it's got pickups and trailers right in front of it and the driver, the driver's trying to find a safe place to let me off at it and, but in the mornings, I notice that some of the customers are parked right on the sidewalk and when I'm walking up to the bus stop in the morning, you see beer bottles, you see cans all over the place, but like I say, the City Go Bus, I ride that because they're trying to find a safe place for me to, to let me off on Ellsworth and Santa Fe and so wave and to flag down the bus, but it's just when I'm off at 2:00 and they bring me home, you cannot find a place or safe place for me to get off at the bus and everything. And that's my consideration because it needs to be controlled, but when the customers at the bar, they park on the sidewalk, you cannot walk down the street or something like that, walk down the sidewalk because they're, they're parked on the sidewalk and everything. And that's my consideration.
Okay. Well, what was your name again, sir?
Larry Loy.
Thank you.
And I live at 229 East Ellsworth Avenue, but I just ride the bus.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
I'm Larry Johnson. I live at 1201 South Santa Fe, which is directly one block north of the property in question. As you heard from your staff, they, the owners kind of have a total disregard for paying attention to rules and regulations that they're supposed to adhere to. So, what makes you think that they're going to adhere to any rules and regulations with the music as of per days, times, decibels? They'll make up their own rules and so it's kind of ironic that the name of the place is library. Most of clientele probably never even been in a library, so, and the music they're going to play isn't going to be classical music, so we're going to hear it all. So, and the music they're gonna play isn't gonna be classical music, so we're gonna hear it all over the neighborhood. So, and we have enough noise on Santa Fe, we got motorcycles, we got vehicles with loud music, we have the fire trucks. And so, we don't need any more noise. And the sidewalk, back to the traffic, the parking situation, as I understand it, if they, they've already increased their seating, which they shouldn't have done, was another violation. So they should have more parking, that's a big issue, and we discussed that. But along Santa Fe, where the walk is, probably eighty, ninety percent of the cars park over the parking, or over the sidewalk. So, you have to walk through the gravel, right there where he's got the cursor. And as you saw in the other picture he had, all the vegetation over there is gone. So all that's left is a sprinkler system, so you gotta either step on it or walk around it. The gravel is spread out over the sidewalk, over the parking, and it's, you know, it's a tripping hazard. But there's a lot of foot traffic on that sidewalk. And of those cars there, you know, there's a lot of young people, they have little kids, like she said, and they have strollers, and I don't know what they do. But even today, when I got ready to come down here, I just looked down the street. Sure enough, there was a car parked all the way up to the landscaping. They need to put a barrier at the sidewalk to keep the cars, even the bumpers, from hanging over into that sidewalk. I mean, it's an issue, and they're out of compliance with the additional seating they put there. And all the things that they've done, and as I understood it, is that not correct? If they had added seating, their restrooms would be out of compliance, they wouldn't have enough?
Yeah, so, building code has what they call fixture requirements, which is the number of urinals and toilets that you're required to have for a facility. And that's based on different occupant loads and different uses. And in talking to the building official, one of the reasons that the architect originally designed the restaurant, bar, grill with a forty-nine-person maximum occupancy is because of limitations that they have in terms of their restroom facilities as well.
Yeah, so, okay. I guess in general, they're just a poor neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously, I'm opposed to it.
Let's let anybody else that needs, wants to make a comment first, before we go back to anybody that's already spoke.
My name is Madeline Smith, I live at 108 East Ellsworth, which is right behind the bar, if you're not familiar with the property. So we live just across the alleyway from them. And a lot of the folks that have already spoken have already said a lot of what we would like to say. It's just, I mean, me and my younger sister get home really late at night, because we work. So we come home and we'll get catcalled by the patrons of the bar. They'll leave that door open in the back alleyway, and their music will be blasting. I mean, we can hear it all the way in the living room of our house, which is on the other side of the property. We've had comments from neighbors about how they can feel their windows rattling from the music that's already there without the sound system even being up. And a lot of their speakers, which they have up right now, are pointed directly towards our house, which I've got a couple of my younger brothers here, which are affected by the, you know, people peeing in the alleyway, people leaving beer bottles scattered around. We come out to find them playing with beer bottles and sticks that have been left half, and be half-empty in our alleyway. So, just adding on to the comments that have already been made by a lot of our neighbors, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ashley Pro, I also reside at 108 East Ellsworth Avenue. Another concern is, a lot of the patrons from the bar are coming from the bar, and they are drunk and using our front yard to sit in, lay in. They are also using our trash cans and throwing up in our yard, peeing in our yard. You can't see it very clear in the picture, but there's a tree in the corner of the property, further away from the bar. And there have been at least two grown men urinating on that tree the night that the power went out, due to the storm, the windstorm. They, it has also been noted that they're peeing in the alleyway, they're throwing up in the alleyway. My then-nine-year-old son, we walked outside, he had a beer can on a stick that was partially empty. The parking is horrible, they park all along the street. Like my daughter said, her and my other teenage daughter work, they work late, sometimes not coming in till midnight. And they have nowhere to park, they're having to park down the street, and as they're walking home, they are getting catcalled by grown men. Also, my husband, Charles Pro, is a veteran, but also a recovering alcoholic, and they put a bar in our backyard. I know we're not here for all that, I know we're here for the noise, but it's already out of control, without adding any more sound or noise to it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
My name's Peggy Atchison, Dan is my husband. We've lived in this neighborhood for like thirty-eight years. The noise level has become outrageous, much less the people driving down Fourth Street that are leaving the bar, and they go down Santa Fe, and they turn down Minneapolis, and they hit the corner, they don't stop at the stop sign, they drive like idiots down that street to Kansas Wesleyan, where they're staying. I hate to say that, but nine-tenths of the guys that are there are obviously coyotes, okay? It's irritating, I'm sorry. I'm sixty-six years old, I want peace, I want quiet. I want to be able to go outside in my backyard and sit without worrying about, is that drunk guy that's wobbling down Fourth Street gonna make it home okay? I don't want to worry about him, I want to worry about me. The noise level from Kansas Wesleyan's bad enough without adding more. We don't need music that I don't want to listen to. Like you said, it's not gonna be classical music, it's not gonna be the kind of music that you listen to, that I listen to, that, you know. It's gonna be outrageously loud. Are they gonna conform to what you guys set? And if they don't, where do we go? What do we do? I mean, we're here, we're saying we don't want this. So what's the next step? If you guys okay it, or you even postpone it, and then they come back and they do this again, and when it finally does get okayed, if they don't conform, where do we go then? What do we do? What's our next step? It's, please just don't. Just don't. We need peace and quiet, and they're right. There are babies in our neighborhood, babies, that are not sleeping, that are not getting their peace and quiet. It's a neighborhood, it's not a bar. And I, a restaurant? It's not an Applebee's, it's a bar. And you guys all know, as well as we know, how we behaved when we were young and we went to the bar. We didn't mind our manners, did we? And those guys that are there are not doing it either. So, please, just deny this, so that we can have some peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Larry Loy, Dan, is there any way, anyway, is there a city code that they trim their trees? Turn their trees, so you're walking down the street, or sidewalk, is there any way they can trim their trees so they won't hit you in the head? I've had a few limbs that hit me in the head, and it's very, very upset, the trees ain't pruning and everything. Is there a city code, or is there anything that can take their trees and prune their trees up so they won't hit you in the head while you're walking down the sidewalk?
Now, is this related back to this property?
Yes.
There is a city code, if it's a city street tree, which a couple of those on, I'd have to see the specific tree, but the city forester, city forestry is, would be the ones
Right there.
doing that. So if that is hanging, so it's obstructing the sidewalk, then it would be a matter of bringing that attention to the city forester and having them go out and address it, because that's a street tree.
Okay, thank you. There's, like I said, there's two of them on the property. I've had a couple of those limbs hit me in the head. It's not very pleasant. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from anybody in attendance? Dustin, do we have anybody online?
We do have a few people, I don't know if any of them want to speak. Doesn't appear none of them are raising their hand or muting themselves.
We did want to bring to the
I'm wanting to speak.
Oh, there is one. Yes, please, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Ting Nguyen, I live on 131 East Minneapolis. And my dad works night shift, and he needs to sleep throughout the day and most of the night, or like toward the end of the night as well, like by, he wakes up at like nine. And that noise complaint, or the noise level, is not gonna be sustainable for him to get a good night's sleep. So, I just don't think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, Dustin?
We'll give him a moment, and see if there's anybody else.
We just wanted to call attention to, there's four separate written correspondence that staff received, either hand-delivered or electronically from interested neighboring property owners. And so, there's four different, one is handwritten, and I think one was transcribed by Dustin, and two were emailed to me, and those were, we acknowledged them and said that we would provide those to planning commissioners, so that they were not able to attend the meeting or join via Zoom, but they wanted to submit their comments in writing. So we wanted to make sure that was, you were aware of those, and that's part of the record.
It appears we do not have any additional interest on Zoom.
Okay, so, any other comments from the applicant at this point?
I would just, there were a couple comments that I wrote down that I would like to address. The general rule of thumb is that the city has a general disturbing the peace ordinance, and that it doesn't have set decibel levels in it. So there's somewhat subjectivity involved, but that is enforced by the police department. In this particular case, because it involved a change of use from a mortuary to a bar, and because of the ordinance we have about outdoor amplified sound, in this case, the complaint from Mr. Boyer was, started with the police, but ended up with planning and building services, and were the ones that went out and had them remove the speakers when they first opened. And that was in response to the complaint that eventually made it to the city manager's office and city commissioners. And so, we oversaw those speakers being removed that were outside. As we noted, we've had this ordinance in effect, you could, we used to refer to it as the JC Bar, JC's Bar and Grill ordinance, because that was the first bar and grill to have an outdoor patio and to have live bands and outdoor amplified sound. And although it's not as close as this, a lot of people perceive speakeasies or what was formerly JC's Bar and Grill as being in or near a neighborhood. So that is the business that started this response. This hearing has got a lot of similarities and reminisces to what planning commission meetings we used to have on bars in the downtown area, we had similar complaints. Right now, if you want to have a bar in the downtown area, you have to have this hearing and notification before you even open. But in other places outside the downtown area, a bar and grill is a permitted use. So we didn't, there wasn't a hearing, there wasn't a review. This property's zone C3, and you can have what, while it's not operating like Applebee's, it has similarities to Applebee's, it has a kitchen, it has a menu, it serves alcohol. So from a land use standpoint, it's classified the same way, and it's a permitted use. It is the aspect of adding outdoor sound to outdoor patio areas that has triggered this application in this hearing. So, there are things that staff, including the police department, can do on an ongoing basis, but the use itself is legal, and the hearing today is to determine whether the library should be able to add speakers that provide amplified sound outside the building.
Thank you, Dean, and then, I'm gonna close this to public comment at this point, and then I may have a question for you based on the comments that you just made. So, the photo that we have seen of the location with the speakers out, when was that photo taken? And the reason I'm asking that is, if you said that the speakers were removed, did they have speakers, they were removed, and then they went back up?
Yeah, so, on the projector here, there are two speakers on the north side, and this is what was the original storage area that has sixteen seats, sixteen-seat patio. Those have been added, and then there are four in the west patio that have also been added. Mr. Andrew is correct, they were up, we received complaints. We went and talked to the bar owners and to their credit. They complied with the request to remove those speakers. And as to when they were put back up, I can't tell you. These pictures were taken last week. In terms of when were these pictures taken, I think it was, oh goodness, maybe Wednesday, something like that.
I'm good, unless somebody else needs to know, they've been up and they've been taken down.
Yeah, they went up two weeks ago, so
They're back up?
I addressed that when I was up earlier, so we could set the parameters of how that time lock would work, and how that volume control, and how it actually operated.
Okay. So, I'm gonna take it to discussion with the commission.
I'll jump in. I was reading through this packet once we received it, and I was overwhelmed at the non-conformities that were already in place. And then we're getting a request for a conditional use, and we obviously can't approve that because of all of the non-conformities that are in place already. My concern is, if we do give a conditional use, that that use is going to be abused, like everything else that has, that we have on this list of non-conformities. The speakers are already up right now. I wasn't by there last night, but we had comments from the public that they were hearing music playing from those last night, I believe, as they walked through. I guess my comment is, if they're not gonna follow through with what's already in place, what's gonna hold them to following through on what we put in place?
Well, I'll weigh in. I'm a hundred percent pro-business, and would like to see the business either withdraw this application or postpone it to a reasonable date. But either way, the non-conforming stuff has to be brought into conformance, period. And I hope that you really take to heart the things that your neighbors are saying, and you're able to address those. I think there's always gonna be a push between a bar and whoever's the neighbor, whether it's another business or a family that lives in a house. But I think that the application probably should be withdrawn. And I would agree that, I mean, I'm pro-business in all situations, but also the fact that the residents living next to them, they've purchased those homes, they were there before the business was started, they've been They've been there. What's currently happening is impacting what they're doing. And the biggest issue is, and again, a lot of times situations, and people will say, hey, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than for permission. Unfortunately, we've got multiple situations of not asking for permission and then just hoping for forgiveness afterwards. My concern is, is as Mr. Farmer said, is the likelihood that they'll conform afterwards if we give permission doesn't look very good from the track record right now. So if we're looking for a motion, I would make a motion to, um, deny application CU 22 dash four.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. carries four, one.
We will, we will communicate that decision in writing to the applicants. So with, with that denial, that means that there would be a waiting period before they could submit anything similar or identical to, to this request. So that means that there, there will be no ability to bring this back for six months from today's date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
That now takes us to application CU 22 dash five. Is the applicant here for that one? Okay, can we hear from staff?
I will be doing this staff report as well, so give me a moment as I switch gears here as quickly as I can. Okay. So our next application is also a conditional use permit, but it has a different flavor to it. It's a different type of conditional use permit. The background of this particular property is, it is a property that is located east of the Kansas State campus, uh, part of the Schilling Air Base way back when. And Harbin Construction, who has their construction yard at the southeast corner of Copper Court and Sentinel Road, originally developed this property. They divested of the property that is this rectangle that I'm, I'm circling right now in, in 1997. So it was constructed in 1977, sold 20 years later to Superior Heating and Plumbing Company in 1997, and they have operated out of this location since that time. Recently, Superior Heating and Plumbing have relocated to the former Eldorado bus plant out on Wall Street. And so they vacated the site and engaged into a lease agreement with Bruckner Truck Sales, which is out of Hayes, Kansas, for the sales and service of trucks from the site. The site, however, is zoned I-1, which is our restricted, or industrial park zoning classification, which does not permit truck sales and service. And so neither Superior Plumbing nor Bruckner noticed that or checked into it prior to engaging into the lease agreement. And so when Mr. Andrew, who is the zoning administrator and has to sign all, um, zoning certificates for the state was approached about, uh, truck sales at this location, he was unable to sign that state license because of the current zoning. And so in talking with, in working with Bruckner Truck Sales, what they decided to do is propose a text amendment, which would basically change the I-1 district and the, the permitted uses that are listed within it to allow and conditional uses that are listed in it to allow for truck sales and service to be a conditional use permit within the I-1 district. Now, what that does is it doesn't necessarily mean that the site is permitted to have truck sales and service, but it does mean it's eligible to come before this board and request your permission to see if the site and the location are conducive for that use. And so that text amendment came before the planning commission, as you recall, and also went to the city commission and they, the city commission also approved that text amendment in May of 2022. And so that brings us to, um, the current request. So now that the I-1 district has been amended to allow for truck sales and service to be a conditional use, that's possible. The applicant is, is applying for a conditional use permit for their truck sales and service operations. And so the criteria that we look at, even though it's a different type of conditional use permit from our last application item that we looked at, the criteria is still the same. And so when we look at the zoning ordinance and the zoning requirements, the site meets all of the zoning requirements with the exception of a pre-existing non-conforming setback. The property is currently setback 32 feet 10 inches from the Copper Court property line on the north side. It's required to have a 35-foot setback, so it's about two feet short. That is a pre-existing non-conforming characteristic of the property. There's also proposed customer perking that would be what we call pull-in, back-out parking, where you pull in from the street and then back out into the street. That is not allowed by the off-street parking regulations. Off-street parking is required to have an access aisle that is off-street so that you're not backing into a public street, but rather exiting the site going forward. And so that would have to be redesigned in order to meet the off-street parking requirements. So those are the two main non-conformities. There is also kind of a strange non-conformity that, that we haven't really seen before as staff, and, and that Superior Plumbing at some point in time between what we think is 2007 and 2010 took two shipping containers and stored them on the site in the southwest corner of the property and then connected them with like a, a type of a roof structure to create an accessory structure that doesn't adhere to the setback requirements of, of an accessory structure. So it's not really a building, doesn't meet building code, doesn't have a foundation, doesn't really have many of the characteristics that we would, we would have in a building, but it, it is a structure that has a, a roof that is a little bit different. So those would be the, the non-conformities that we find with the site that are not meeting, um, the requirements. There is also two grandfathered pre-existing non-conforming characteristics that we probably want to bring up. The I-1 district is the only industrial district within the City of Salina code that requires off-street parking be paved. It does not allow gravel parking like an I-2 or I-3 zoning district would. It requires that it, that all parking and driving aisles be surfaced with either concrete pavement or asphalt. Uh, in this case, we do have gravel. And the reason we have gravel is because this property was originally developed in 1983. And that paving requirement for I-1 properties did not come into effect until 1988, meaning the gravel predates that requirement. And so that's when I say grandfathered status of the parking lot, that's what I'm referring to is the pre-existing non-conforming nature of the gravel parking. And that, that's the surfacing requirement. It's not the dimensional requirement, which is in question on the north side where we have vehicles that pull in and back out directly onto the street. It's the surfacing that's pre-existing non-conforming. Uh, in addition to that, there's also, uh, landscape requirements that are typically required for I-1 zoning. And being that this property was, again, developed in 1983 and the landscape requirements were not adopted until 1994, it predates those requirements as well. So aside from the accessory structure, uh, that we have, that's a basically two Conex boxes with a roof on it. And the off-street parking that's being proposed on the north side, everything appears to be either pre-existing or, or inconformance. Uh, staff would ask that the applicant clarify their plan to provide off-street parking spaces that conform to all the off-street parking regulations. That would, that would relate to any parking stalls, uh, that are being proposed, as well as any, um, what we call loading and loading zones. And we'll get into that when we talk more about parking later on in the report. So that deals with the, um, zoning requirement aspects, welfare and convenience to the public. The applicant states that they are a service organization that provides parts and service and truck sale support for local and transient customers. And they state that local customers and truck owners will benefit from having their service locally in town as they will not have to go out of town or travel hours away to get the similar, a similar type of service that they provide. Staff would agree that having services like Bruckner is proposing within the city does help contribute to the welfare by providing for the needs of local businesses, particularly those in the airport industrial area that have trucking needs and having that support. It also puts a vacant building into good positive use for the community. So that would be another positive, uh, factor when you're talking about welfare and convenience to the public. And looking at the injury to the surrounding property and domination of the neighborhood, all of the properties around and adjacent to this particular property are all zoned I-1 as well. And so they all have similar zoning, uh, requirements. And all of them are of an industrial nature. So to the north, you have a mini storage facility. To the west, you have the Harbin Construction. To the south, you have MSM Enterprises. And then to the east, you have a, uh, Lift Truck Specialties and a tower, a cell tower, as well as precision machine and welding. And those, precision machine and welding is also a conditional use permit that was approved by the planning commission a few years ago. So there are similar types of uses that have, uh, somewhat similar nature to them within the vicinity. And looking at the existing utilities and drainage, because we have an existing building and existing site, we already have water and sanitary sewer available to the site, and there are no proposed additions that the applicant is proposing that could potentially increase storm water runoff. So there are no changes to those requirements or impacts to those requirements. And looking at traffic access and parking, off-street parking for truck sales and service is dependent on a few different things. One is the display area. So you're required to have one off-street parking space for every 3,000 square feet of display area for vehicle sales. And that's true for, it's a car dealership or if it's a truck dealership. You're also required to have two off-street parking spaces per service bay, plus one for each employee. In this particular case, the applicant has only 252 square feet of display service area. And I'll pull up a site plan and show you that the area in which that's being proposed. It's primarily proposed in the southeast corner of the property. Um, they plan on having a truck or two, and that would be about it for display. And then, um, they do have a few service bays and eight, two service bays and eight employees. So in total, the site's required to have 12 off-street parking spaces. There are 11 currently south of the building. And there are a few on the north side that wouldn't work in the configuration that's being proposed. And so staff would ask the applicant to clarify or give us their ideas of how they will address the shortage of off-street parking. Knowing that they need at least 12 off-street parking spaces and they currently have 11, how will they address that issue? Again, staff would note that the paving is pre-existing non-conforming, or the lack of paving, the gravel, rather, is pre-existing non-conforming because it was part of the original development in 1983, which predates that 1988 requirement for paving. So in addition to the 12 off-street parking spaces, industrial sites of this size are also required to have one 10-foot wide by 25-foot long or deep loading and loading zones, and that's for moving, uh, supplies in and out of the business and their operations. And so knowing the location of that loading and loading area would be something that the applicant will also need to provide for staff and, and for the board. Looking at conformance with the comprehensive plan, this whole area, uh, this whole area, meaning the airport authority area and all the properties that kind of surround it is all part of the employment hub, future land use category in the comprehensive plan. And that future land use category projects potential zoning districts such as I-1, I-2, I-3, C-1, C-2U, and, and then planned development districts. So the existing zoning is not being proposed to be changed, but those uses that are either permitted or conditional would fit into those, those potential uses within the employment hub, uh, classification. So that takes us to alternative actions. The first action you could potentially take is to approve a conditional use permit to allow a truck sales and service facility upon finding that the requirements of section 42, 5, 9, 7, C2 of the zoning code have been satisfactorily addressed. You could approve a conditional use permit subject to special conditions or revisions to the plan. You could postpone, consideration if you feel additional information is needed. Or if there are specific pieces of the plan that you feel need to be revised or addressed. You could deny the applicant's request if you don't find, if you find that it does not meet the required findings of facts to approve it. And that it would have incompatibilities with development in the surrounding neighborhood. So we do have attached, before I get into our recommendations, we do have a, an attachment of findings of fact related to approval of the conditional use permit. Uh, what staff would do, and we look at this particular case, is we, we have a couple of questions that, that we feel need to be addressed. And that is how is the applicant going to revise or propose site plan so that none of the off-street parking spaces back directly into Copper Court? And also, how are they going to revise the site plan to add a loading and loading zone? Now, if those two pieces are able to be, um, answered satisfactorily, satisfactorily to the board's liking, then we would recommend approval of the conditional use permit with three conditions of approval that are listed at the bottom of page 10 and 11. And those would revolve around revisions to the site plan for the off-street parking, as well as the loading, unloading area, and then a condition that the use of the site by the applicant shall substantially conform to the amended site plan submitted and approved by the planning commission. So what that means is they would amend the site plan that you have up on the overhead projector here, so that it has sufficient off-street parking as well as loading and loading for receiving and shipping of supplies, and that they would adhere to that site plan, once it's revised. Are there any questions of staff that we could answer?
I just had a quick question, Dustin. Haven't we in other similar circumstances, that front area? We've had solutions where we've just turned the parking 90 degrees so that there's an aisle running north-south, and then the spaces access that aisle instead of the street?
Right. So what Mr. Andrew is, is alluding to is if you turned, let's say, the accessible parking, and this is probably a good spot for accessible parking, because accessible parking, is required to be paved regardless of the pre-existing non-conforming nature of the gravel parking lot. You could turn it 90 degrees. So if you're a vehicle, you're driving it off of Copper Court, you come in and you pull in, let's say, this way. So your, your, uh, lines for your parking stall would actually be east-west oriented versus north-south. You could do something similar with, with parking in the gravel area where you come in and you're parked like, like this versus, uh, versus backing into the street. You back into this access aisle and then pull out. So there are really simple ways to address that, I guess is what staff is saying, but they would need to be addressed.
Okay. Any comments for, or questions for staff? Okay. If not, can we hear from the applicant? If not, can we hear from the applicant?
He's muted, but there is a, I mean, Chris is online, if he'd like to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, good. I apologize, I'm driving and I hope there's not too much road noise, and I cannot see the plan that you're, you're reviewing, but I, you know, we're, we're open to changing the, I guess, the direction, if I understand what you're saying, the direction of the parking in front of the building to, to 8 to 90 degrees, if I understood right. But I don't, I guess in my mind, I don't see how that would allow the additional, or the number of parking spots that would be needed.
Yeah, so what would happen there, Chris, is if those four parking spaces, or five if you include the handicap accessible one, are turned 90 degrees, they would become eligible for, I guess, counting them. In other words, they would become legitimate parking spaces that meet the dimensional requirements of off-street parking spaces within our off-street parking regulations, and therefore, we could count them where currently, the way they are, that you back directly into copper court for both the accessible space and the four customer spaces, and those do not meet the dimensional requirements as they, they back directly onto the street and not onto an access aisle on the site. So it doesn't necessarily increase the number of parking spaces that you have on your site, but what it does is it allows us to give you credit for the five on the north side, which we currently can't do, if that makes sense, if I explained that well enough.
We have no problem turning those.
Okay. What about the loading and unloading?
So if, if you want to pull the, the map back up.
And real quick, if you don't mind, if you could state your name and address, please.
I'm Adam Ladd, and I'm the operations manager for this location here. So the, if you scroll up just a little bit, the intent would be to, for loading and unloading where the, on the far right side, there is a pre-existing loading dock that is concrete there that, that could be used. I don't intend on really using it for, for our application when people bring stuff in. We unload on the back of a truck with a forklift, take it around the back of a building and unload it. So I would have them pull in between the building and the fence on the far right side there. There's plenty of space to pull in and park and unload with a forklift there out of the way that access off-street where there's no issues.
Does that need to be designated or something, Dustin?
Yeah, so it would just be designated on the site plan, showing the, the area and making sure that it's, it's in a location that doesn't interfere with the current access aisle. So it would have to be, if it's going to be on the east side of the building, that's also where the existing gate is, so this is basically an access aisle, and so it would have to be located for, far enough south so that vehicles and trucks could enter the site without running directly into it if it's, in fact, loading and loading while they're coming through and they can get around it.
That's, that's not an issue.
It was, that was only 10-foot by 25-foot.
Correct.
And Dustin, the number of parking spaces, just to clarify, you're counting those in the southeast corner of that property, so this, there's no problem meeting it?
No, I, I don't think that, the, the question isn't whether or not they have enough space for off-street parking spaces. The question is, are they going to be located and dimensioned correctly so that we can count them all? So they've got plenty of, of space on their site for the required off-street parking spaces. We just need a revised plan that shows how it's all going to lay out and work dimensionally and meet all those requirements.
And are you and Chris both okay with that change in, in?
Yeah.
Making that happen?
Yes, that's not an issue. We can have that done and have, have reprint the drilling tomorrow with the change as far as that goes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, this is Chris again, and I, I think I got dropped, but would y'all require paving in that area, or I guess, or just striping, or what would be required for the front of the building?
Yeah, so the only parking stall that would be required to be paved is the handicap accessible stall, and that's a requirement from ADAG and the Department of Justice. The rest of the parking stalls could be surfaced with gravel, and typically how people have denoted where they are, because you can't really stripe or paint gravel, is they'll put bumper blocks, parking blocks in those locations, or something similar to that, to denote in the field where those parking stalls are, and that would really be all that would be required. You wouldn't need to stripe or paint any of the stalls, they would just have to have something in the field that would denote where those parking stalls are for customers and employees.
And the handicap accessible spot, if you will, is already paved, so that front corner section is already paved.
So it just needs to be striped at this point in time?
Yes.
Correct, and oriented in a, in a direction that works dimensionally.
That's fine. Yeah, we can turn it without an issue there. There's, there's, there's actually plenty of space, I know, per zoning requirements. You could back out and turn without being on the street at all, and it's a very low, low-maintenance street as far as that goes, but you could, even though it's in the easement considered, but we can turn them, that's not an issue.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we'll go to comments by public. Anybody online, Dustin?
It does not appear anyone online wants to speak on this item.
So we're going to go close public comment and take it up to discussion for the commission.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd, finding that the facts on the finding of fact sheet have been met, I'd make a recommendation that we approve application CU-22-5 with the three staff recommendations.
On page 10 and 11?
Yes, on page 10 and 11.
I second.
Okay. So it'd been motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, carries five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you need timeframe wise or, or for that, to do that?
Okay.
Say tomorrow on the new drilling?
Yeah, we can work with Charlie to get that.
Okay, because our license is, we're going to throw a good mess.
No, if that's, I don't think I still have a copy of it, but if you give it to me, I'll sign it.
Awesome, I'll have to do it tomorrow.
All right.
All right, that brings us to application Z-22-7 and P-10-1B filed by Stone Lake Development.
So the next three items on your agenda all relate to the Stone Lake Development Area and Stone Lake Development LLC, and the first item presents the question of the appropriate zoning classification for the southeast corner of that proposed subdivision area. Initially, we had 150 acres there at the northeast corner of Ohio and Schilling, and only 100 of those 150 acres were final platted initially, and so the, the property on the east side of the lake and southeast and south side of the lake were not platted at that time, so they retained their agricultural zoning. They were annexed into the city at that time. So the requests by the applicants are, the request is to rezone the, the 47 proposed lots, and I guess I would clarify that the, the rezoning request area is 52 acres, but 17 of that acres is underwater. So you have 35 net acres that you're actually putting houses on, the 17 acres is, is going to be open space that is water. And so the, the request that was filed was to rezone the 47 lots to R2 zoning. R2 is our intermediate zoning between single-family and apartment zoning, and R2 is generally used in areas where there's a plan to construct two-unit townhomes or duplexes. And so for the benefit of the commission, a duplex is a property that is built, it's retained under one ownership, and you have rentals at both sides. A townhome is designed so that you can have a common wall that also serves as a property line, and then generally, you divide the townhome and you divide the property in half, and half is sold to one party and half is sold to another party. So there, the firewalls and the separations between a townhome and a duplex are slightly different, and you generally end up with two owners where there's a townhome and one owner where there's a duplex. So this is contiguous to, it's a logical extension of the existing Stone Lake Development as we noted, and I think, Dustin, we had a historical photo that showed the area when it was, when it was a mined area, but the, this corner over here was the real active area for the sand mining operation, and it was the last to be reclaimed and restored, so there was a, a delay in getting that done. But you can see in this photo that most of this side was undisturbed, and so there wasn't a lot of work to be done. But over here, there was quite a bit of reclamation work that had to be done by the sand pit operator before it could be developed. And so there's, there's three things that have occurred that make this particularly suitable for residential development, and the first is that the, the city put an interceptor sewer line in that runs through this area, and that was done in 1992, and it comes across the property here and then makes an L shape across that property, and that interceptor goes all the way around the east side of the, the city. The second thing was, there was a major water line loop that was constructed from Magnolia Road down Ohio to Schilling and tied back to the west, and that provided water service to this area. And then the third improvement was a KDOT-funded project that paved and widened and put curb and gutter on South Ohio Street. So those three things have made this property desirable for residential development. And so we've got water, sewer, infrastructure in place, we have, South Ohio Street is the primary access point, and the only real discussion point or question that staff has is that there's, the request is for all 47 lots to be R2, which provides maximum flexibility because you can go either way, but most of the existing multifamily or townhome lots in Stone Lake today are at the edges along the arterial streets and not, not in the center lots. And as we reviewed the layout of the lots, it appeared to us that some of the lots are designed and laid out really more for construction of single-family homes. So we think the, by rezoning the whole thing to R2 for townhomes, we wouldn't anticipate that you would see a townhome on every single lot. So primarily what that does is it probably overstates the proposed density and it overstates the, the trips that would be generated, because obviously, if you have 47 lots and you put twin homes on each lot, you've got more households, more traffic, and higher density. We don't, we don't think that's going to happen, but the, we just wanted to make clear that the request is for R2 zoning for every lot. That means you could see up to 94 dwelling units there because of the number of, of lots. So we've made several findings related to this. This property is within the city's primary service area. On the urban service area map, we've already made utility investments here with the physical attributes of the property and those utilities. This is suitable for further extension of streets, water, and sewer lines. This could be viewed as a logical and expected expansion of the Stone Lake addition. If you could go to the zoning, the color zoning map, Dustin? Or, or the one that's in the packet, either one, but this is, so you see, this is the existing zoning pattern for the area. You've got, we've got duplexes under construction on this area here, there's a couple under construction here. This is R2.5 area here, so if you carry that across here, that would be consistent and would back up to Schilling Road. We don't think it's, that there's probably going to end up having townhomes built on every single lot, but that is, that is the existing pattern. So the R1 reflects the smaller lots, the, all the lakeside lots are R, because R has a larger lot size requirement and a bigger front yard setback, and so that, that is the existing pattern, and so the request is to make this entire area R2. So it is, having R2 along the south is consistent with the R2.5 area, but it's not consistent with this up here, which is all R and R2.5. And then our comprehensive plan shows this as being expected for residential suburban-type development. So as it relates to the zoning, you could recommend approval of the applicant's request for R2 zoning for the entire 47 lots. You could recommend a zoning change to R1 on all or a portion of the proposed lots, so you could, you could have a recommendation that some of the lots, such as the lakeside lots, be zoned for single-family use and recommend R2 on, on the others, or you could recommend that every lot be single-family. You could recommend that this be postponed to a future meeting date to allow staff or the applicant to provide additional information, or to allow revisions to be made to the proposed plat layout prior to consideration of this request, or you could recommend denial of this rezoning request, provided appropriate findings are made. So our thought is to, to recommend that the applicant can give further consideration to limiting some of the lots to R or R1 development. All the lakeside lots in Phase 1 are all zoned R. Once those lots are identified, we would recommend approval either of a mix of R, R1 and R2 zoning, or you can recommend that the entire 47 lots be zoned R2, and that would be subject to satisfactory final plating of the property. So with that, I don't know, Dustin, if you want to just, for the benefit, put the proposed plat layout up so we can refer to those lots. So this is, this is oriented, so north is to the right here, so that, that ties into that area, and this is the east side, and then this is the Schilling roadside over here. So we don't have strong opinions on that, we just think that zoning the entire area to R2 kind of overstates the number of units that are probably actually going to get built there, and so it's always good if the zoning matches up with the intended use, but there's, we certainly have the capacity in our utility system and, and road network to accommodate either development pattern there. So with that, we'll pause and take any questions you have about the zoning side of this, we'll get into the plat and our next item.
Questions for staff on the zoning? Please state name and address.
Kelly Dunn, 1216 Shoreline Drive. Maybe we can fix this real fast. I think there was a little miscommunication between us and our engineer that filled out the application. It says R2 on the application, but we actually just want to continue with the R2.5 on Schilling Road. All the lake lots would, we would want to be R, and there's seven lots that back up to the east property line, we'd want those to be R1.
So can you bring that plat back up? So can you bring that plat back up?
If you could use a pointer or direct my pointer on the screen.
So what he's referring to is that these would be the multifamily lots, all backing up to Schilling Road. So that these lakeside lots would be R consistent with the lakeside lots on the other side and then up in this corner Dustin, right in here, that these would be R1, is that it correct?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So I just, I just want to qualify one thing that the commission can always stay the same and go down, but they can't go up. So the advertised request was for R2 zoning, you can grant less than R2 zoning, but you can't grant more than R2 zoning. So the question would be, would it work, if the plan is to build only townhomes or duplexes here, then the R2 zoning could go from here to here because that's what was advertised, but you couldn't recommend R2.5 because that's a greater density than what was applied for. So if, if R2, which would certainly work for townhomes or duplexes, then these lots right here would be R2, these would be R on the inside and then this right here would be zoned.
R1.
R1.
And we'd be okay to leave that R2, that backs up to Schilling Road.
Okay. All right.
That makes a lot more sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, that helps clarify things. Okay, comments from public? Dustin, do we have anybody online?
The, we have a letter at your place, we have two public comments that were received on this, they really don't deal with the zoning, they deal more with the plat, so we'll kind of address them there, but you have correspondence from the county administrator on behalf of Celine County, which owns some property on the south side of Schilling and then we have some comments from Gary Johnson, who owns the property directly to the east. We think it best to address those as we look at the plat.
Okay.
We do not appear to have anyone from the public online.
All right, so we'll close, public comment, take it back to the commission for discussion. So I think that clarified a lot for me.
I move we approve application Z22-7.
As described by the applicant, okay.
I'll second that. Okay, so we have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that carries 5-0, so we will move then to P10-1B.
Yes, and this is a preliminary plat application that was filed and for this, these 47 lots there and so what we've done in that case is we just, we just gave you more history. The Stone Lake addition started out in 2010, it was originally platted by Dane Barclay, who was the sand pit operator and he retained the services of Jim Mays of Compro Realty to, to come up with a plan for redeveloping the property with housing. And the two main features that dictate how this got designed were one, we had the L-shaped east-west and then north-south interceptor sewer line that runs through this property and I don't know if there's any way to turn that layer on Dustin, but that, that really was a, a driver for how this got laid out and so that green line that comes across at Shoreline Drive, basically the utilities department to get access to that, their preference is that the street be built over the top of it and so basically Shoreline Drive was put in and built over the top of that sewer line so that would ensure that city crews could get access to it for maintenance and then of course you had the, the sand pit lake and so that, that dictated how everything was done there. So there was a plat that was approved in 2010 and it has 154 lots and 20 of them are zoned R, 113 are zoned R1, 21 are zoned R2.5 and then there's some commercial lots down in the southwest corner. So the distinction here is that we had Dane Barclay, who developed Phase 1 essentially west of the sand pit lake and then he sold 17 lots on the north side of the sand pit lake to Mr. Doug Bradley and so you had two different developers there and then in 2019 our current applicant, Stone Lake Development LLC purchased all the remaining property and so there were 107 lots that they purchased and they have been developing those 107 lots in three different phases and I, I think I have a map in your packet that depicts those, but they had a phase 3A, 3C and, and 3B and so staffs had to resort to color coding the area so we can keep track of who's, who's doing what, but we call this the Doug Bradley area and then this was the original area and then Stone Lake Development is building houses in here as we speak and they've just gotten approval for special assessment financing and plans to put this in. So you can see that there is ultimately two ways, public street connections to Ohio here at Shoreline and here at Crystal Place, so there are two street connections to Ohio Street. So their, their plan is to plat the remaining unplowed ground east and south of the sand pit lake to create 47 lots for new single family and two-family construction. We've already dealt with their companion rezoning application, this property is already annexed into the city. Obviously the good news for them is that Ohio Street is already improved and it has two public street access points and so I think our only sticking point for staff's perspective is that the original 2010 preliminary plat that the planning commission reviewed proposed, an emergency access road that was connected to Schilling Road and the applicants did not include that in their preliminary plat for this submittal and the reason it's, even though there are two street access points on Ohio Street, they're relatively close together and as we discussed in the aeroplanes development recently, there, there is a requirement to have remoteness between the access points so that you can get better, better coverage and access to the backside of the lake, so to speak. So staff would like to see, to be able to work with the applicants to reestablish an emergency access point there. It's important for that reason and it's also important from the standpoint that if there ever does come a time where Schilling Road is improved and it's paved as a, a pub, a public street that has got curb and gutter or full paving, then you have the opportunity to, to make that into a street connection. Right now there's no street connections proposed because Schilling Road is unimproved and because Schilling Road, there's an agreement between the city and county that Schilling Road will be owned and maintained by Celine County, not the city, so that's not within the city's control to affect the improvement of that road. And so I think that's the only question we have from an access standpoint. Schilling Road is not annexed, as you can see from that line, there's no plan in place to upgrade it or annex it, that would be the results of further consultations and negotiations between the city commission and Celine County Commission. So from the standpoint of access and connectivity to Ohio Street, we think that's all good. The only thing that staff is requesting is that there be a place provided on Schilling Road for an emergency access point. There's good internal connectivity with the Stone Lake addition, there's more than one route that can be taken to reach almost any lot there, there's, it's a racetrack design, so there's no dead end streets, all the dimensions for the streets as proposed conform with city standards as we noted. The only thing that we think is lacking is that, an emergency access point. I think we provided a drawing in your packets that showed where that was on the plat that was presented to the planning commission in 2010. The other thing I would note and it's a pending item, the next item, but as for now, we're showing proposed street name is an extension of Shoreline Drive, but we have a companion request to change the name of the north-south segment over here to Piravita Drive and then the east-west section here to Vista Sewer Drive and so if that is approved, then we would just have the applicant's engineer relabel that on the plat, but as for right now, it's still proposed as an extension of Shoreline Drive. We've looked at the lots, all of them are properly sized, there's no reason that we can see for not, that none of the lots would become unbuildable for some reason, there's some that are shallower on, along the east side there. And so the, the plan is to extend water and tie it in both north and south to create a looped system and then the plan is there's a breakpoint and a portion of the lots would serve by a sewer that runs north and a portion would be served by a portion that runs west and that would tie into the Phase 3C area. We have natural gas in the area that could be extended and then Evergy is already serving the existing subdivision. The other good news for the developers is that they have no need to construct a detention pond because they already own one and so there's plenty of capacity to send their runoff into that existing area. And so we do have attached for you a memo from the city engineer and it was relatively not difficult for the city engineer to conclude that they have adequate stormwater capacity. So the question of, we've kind of itemized the level of improvements that would be needed. They, there's 3,300 feet of new street paving that would go in, sidewalks on both sides, we would have the, any street inlets or pipelines or swales needed to get the water to the sand pit, extension of internal water mains and public sewer lines, we don't have anything offsite. Applicants have indicated that they would like to continue to utilize special assessment We don't have a draft set of covenants, but there's covenants on the initial part and we assume there will be here. The densities with the R, R1 and R2 zoning are, are going to be much less than the 94 maximum units if everything was R2. There is connectivity to Ohio Street, there's a pedestrian crosswalk on Ohio Street and there's the ability for residents to access Jerry Ivy Park and to access Coronado School. So we've kind of outlined the findings that we think that could be made that find this preliminary plat to be in conformance with our preliminary plat guidelines and so our, our recommendation would be to approve the plat and the only thing that we would had, we had condition number three there, that the layout be revised to provide an emergency access point connecting Schilling Road to Shoreline Drive and so, and as an alternative to approving this, you could postpone consideration to a future meeting date if you think there's revisions or additional information needed, or if you don't find that the criteria for plat has been met, then you could make a motion to deny the plat citing whatever criteria you don't think this plat meets. So with that, we'd be open to any questions you have, if you want to go back to the plat layout Dustin.
Dean, what would the construction of that emergency access road be? Would it be paved or would it just be gravel?
No, it'd be gravel.
And if it, and if Schilling did get paved, then...
It could still be gravel, all of our, all of our emergency access roads are, so what, what we've done in, in some other cases is we've, we've just, we've tried to design and locate the emergency access, so you, you basically reserve the space and then if 15 years from now we have a wonderful paved Schilling Road and there's a desire to convert that emergency access into a street, then it would be paved at that point, but it would always be available as another way in for emergency vehicles.
Thank you. But it wouldn't have to be, it could stay at a gravel at that point, right?
Right, it's, it would only become paved if it was a street, but all of our emergency access roads that we have to date are just compressed gravel, they have to be able to support 75,000 pound fire truck, but none of our emergency acts, the only exception, there's an emergency access connection on the east side of the apartments that are east of the mall and that, that is paved, but the standard is it can be compressed gravel and all the ones we have to date are compressed gravel.
So can you bring up the, the, off of Ohio Street where it shows the two entrances, the one that's currently there and then the one that will be there with the next development? So what's the distance between those two points?
Roughly 770 feet in that area.
And the issue for the fire marshal is that the second entrance doesn't really, it's relatively remote from the southeast corner and the east side of the lake and so the, having the access on Schilling Road over there provides an access point that is more accessible to that, to that portion of the subdivision.
And if, if the emergency access is there, then cited Schilling is paved at some point in the future, if that goes to the, goes to a road, is that the developer's expense or is that city expense?
It would probably be done at the developer's expense to turn that into a street.
Okay, but it wouldn't have to at that point.
They wouldn't have to, it would be a choice, but if the, if, if they thought it was desirable, I mean it is, that's a long piece of frontage and if I lived on the, that portion, I would probably be more inclined to come out of the subdivision and exit on to, the only reason that it's that way and there's no street connection there is because the city doesn't have any control over the upgrading of, of Schilling Road, we, we're not making it the developer's responsibility, it's, it's the county's responsibility to what level that road is built and maintained, so.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, can we hear from the applicant?
Kelly Dunn, 1216 Shoreline Drive and maybe Justin might need to help me out with this, but with work with our engineer, he couldn't find in the, within the codes, we were okay just having the two entrances onto Ohio Street, maybe Dean can clarify that too. And also I wanted to point out too, there is an emergency access road to the north of our property that goes out to Ohio Street.
So the, there's two aspects to the, if a subdivision only has one way in and out, it can have no more than 30 lots, as soon as you get over 30 lots, you either need a second street or you need an emergency access and the... And the location of that access point has to be a distance of one-half the, the diameter of the subdivision. So none, none of those, and it, it's easier if we basically revisited the aeroplanes addition. The planning commission has the benefit of that, which you don't have. But the, the access points have to be sufficiently remote from each other to be a distance equal to one-half the diameter distance from here to here. And then divide that in half and then those, the other has to be a, a distance equal to one-half of that. And I, I don't, there, there is no benefit up here that is remote from this area. This is remote from that area. And so this is a point that provides the best, least remote access to that area.
It's kind of a complex scenario there for that. We really would prefer not to. If it's the only way we're going to get through, I guess we'll have to. We really like to see, I mean, it'd be nice if Schilling Road did get paved. I know it's kind of a, a bad spot between the county and the city right now with that road. And hopefully something gets done with that in the future. But I guess that's where we're at with it. I don't know if Justin has any questions on it. Does Justin Owens, he's with our, with Call Valley Engineering?
We don't, we're, sorry, we don't have the fire marshal here with us this evening. We're just conveying his, his comments and requests of his review of the proposed plat. And so when it was proposed in 2010, the fire marshal requested and the developer provided. And I don't know if you can access that Dustin or not. It's, it's in the packet. But it's, there, there was a, there was a point roughly right here on the 2010 preliminary plat that proposed an emergency access point right there. And so that, that was presented to and accepted at, at that time. And we just, we can't come up with a good reason for eliminating that. And the fire marshal expressed a preference for that to remain. And so we have communicated that to the planning commission.
And that, and it had the emergency access to the north that's already there also. So he was requesting that, the, the one to the north was there and then?
Yes.
The development?
That, that became important to allow the, this was done as a first phase and this had to be put in to allow any future housing here or here. And it, it's just the, the fact of once you get over 30 housing units, you have to have a second way in. So I don't, I don't know if there, because the, I'm just trying to speak on behalf of the fire marshal and he, he can speak for himself or put something in writing and we can address that on the final plat. But I'm just conveying the information that I received from the city's fire marshal.
Yeah, I think that would probably be the best. Yeah. Yeah. Justin Owens, Call Valley Engineering, 2928 Jack Circle. I don't really have much to add from that. We did take, you know, we didn't, when we initially did this preliminary plat, we did not put in the emergency access with the idea thinking we got two points off Ohio. We've also got the remote access to the north. We did this work before the aeroplanes and I got some information on that. And I, you know, I don't fully understand the exact nuances of what remoteness actually means. So I guess our, our request was just, we don't want to have it unless, we respectfully request not to have it if it's not required by code. But of course, if it's required by code, and I think, you know, the, the fire marshal thinks that, you know, can, that it's there because of code, not just because we feel like we need an extra access. We're moving on to, you know, we want to follow the code. We want to make a safe, you know, subdivision. So I guess we'd be in agreement as long as we know that, that's something, that's a requirement, not necessarily a preference, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Okay.
So we'll go to public comment.
We do not have anyone online unless there's somebody in the room that would like to comment on this.
So.
Standby Quislinna. I am the property owner to the north where the emergency access road comes down my lane, dual purpose. Recently, there has been some water issues ponding in the, be the northeast corner. South of, south of my lane, it's not on me. And I just wanted to make a, a point that I talked to Kelly Dunn and he talked to his engineer and they reassured me that any of the properties on the east boundary of Stone Lake would, would not make this problem any worse. So they'll find, I guess they'll find a way to drain it to their pond, I guess in layman's terms. I just wanted to make sure that was, that was stated. And I would hope that as they build westward, which butts up to the emergency access lane, I would hope that they take care of the drainage there and don't push it to the north, but push it back to the south. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
I did, now would be the time to point out two items of correspondence that you have at your place there. One is from county administrator. And it's, it's a point that has come up at city commission meetings and other points with the, the Johnson sand, sand pit at the east end of Schilling Road and all the gravel trucks there on a good windy day from south wind. There's a lot of dust that's generated from that road. And the, the dust is not going to be a desirable condition. And so the county administrator points out that this development begs the question of the continued viability of Schilling Road east of Ohio as a county road segment. The, the issue with that is that there, there's an agreement that you have at your place is there that we, that's between the city commission and the county commission as to how Schilling Road's to be owned and maintained. And so our position is that that agreement would have to be changed or renegotiated in some fashion. So right now, the choice of how Schilling Road is owned and maintained is with the county. And the only way that would change is for that agreement to be renegotiated. And that really doesn't have anything to do with the current developers. They're, they're not having an obligation related to that. And then the second letter that's at your place is from Gary Johnson who owns the land on the east side of the hedgerow there, along the east side of Stone Lake. And their concern is that they're, they think that they may have some potential for an application to develop their property. And their question is, could we perhaps have a connectivity clause allowing the developers to connect to Stone Lake Development Utilities? So if you could go to that plat, Dustin? Our answer to that is if you see this right-of-way right here, all of this right-of-way butts up right next to Mr. Johnson's property. So there's going to be utilities placed in that right-of-way. Those are going to be public utilities. And so if Mr. Johnson wanted to tie into one of those lines and extend it east, there really isn't a need for a connectivity clause as he words it there because he's, those are going to be public lines and a public right-of-way so he could access those lines if he ever wanted to try to extend property to the east. The other thing, and maybe this is what Mr. Byquist addressed, but he said he'd noticed that water runoff from the recent rains have affected our property and caused flooding in and around our property. Can that perhaps be addressed? Perhaps have a trench or ditch to accommodate any future flooding? So maybe we could ask Mr. Owens to come back to the podium and just address how he sees or foresees making sure the water from this area gets back to the sand pit and doesn't end up on Mr. Johnson's property.
Yeah, our, our plan is that all of the, as much as we can take everything to the road, everything to the road will drain into the pond. Of course, I think it's not so much an issue on the south side to make sure everything flows away. I think that's how it does naturally. Along the east side, this property is actually kind of built up a good, at least five feet higher than the adjacent property. So there is a slope that slopes back down to the hedgerow. So you keep, it's physically not possible to drain everything back, but we're going to drain probably, you know, 99% of it. There's going to be a little bit that's going to leave the property, but it's all within the drainage easement that we're proposing. And more than likely, it's all, I mean, because it is an easement, they can't build any structures or anything in there. So it's going to be grass area that's not going to increase any impervious areas. So it's not going to, not going to increase any runoff to the properties to the east. Is there any other questions you have regarding the drainage?
You're saying the properties are going to be draining into the street in, in between them?
Right.
So then those will be drained into the lake area itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty difficult to control the natural topography, but you can design the street system so it collects the water and the water from the street goes where it's supposed to. You can't necessarily do that if property is higher than the other property, but you can use what means are available to do that. So that's, that's what we would attempt to do to address the Johnson's concern.
Okay. And then we had somebody else from the public for a comment?
Yes. Scott, Scott Creer at 1514 Shoreline Cove in the northeast corner. I would actually be the house where the water has, has collected. The last rain we had...
Right up in here?
Yes, right there in the, right there. Yes.
Corner.
And it was fairly substantial. Piggybacking on basically what Stan, Mr. Byquist had said, I guess there's one on record that as far as, you know, with Kelly Dunn reassuring, and I'm not up here to debate with an engineer on how things are going to slope, that it's not going to increase the amount of water. Because if, if it were to increase the amount of water, it would be a really, really bad problem down there in that corner where there's houses. Any of those houses in those bottom three are down there. So again, if an engineer tells me that it's going to slip, and it does make sense to me with the streets there, it's going to, it should actually improve it because it's going to get in the sewer system there.
Right.
Just wanted to say that.
So where on, sorry, back to Creer Engineering. So where on the street part was, is the access that it's actually going to go into the?
Can you bring up the plat? So I, um, I don't know if you have a pointer.
Yeah.
Dying on me.
Let's see here, there's... Right here, we've got storms here that drain the street. Swamp sewer pipe that'll outlet into the lake itself. And then if you continue on down the south, you have another point. Yeah, continue a little bit further south. There's another swamp sewer pump line right there. And we also have right here too. So we've got three points that we're discharging into the pond. And they're going to correspond with all our low points in our streets. So everything drains to those points.
Okay. Any other questions for applicant or staff? Okay, so we're going to close the public comment then and then bring it up to discussion with the commission. Thoughts? Your turn. I...
It makes sense where we're going.
Motion? I mean, I think that I would be in agreement with the original 2010 plating with the emergency access along Schilling. Just kind of looking at it, I mean, if I was to buy a property along that area on that east side of it, I mean, we're, you're going to travel quite a ways either to the north or back to the west before you're able to get out of that area.
Well, that's not going to be public access.
No, just emergency access.
Right.
Right.
I would think, you know, yeah, just for safety reasons and insurance and so forth. I agree. I agree. And I think there, if I remember correctly from aeroplanes, you had to have a certain distance from entrances, emergency access entrance as well.
Yeah, it was just based on the diameter of the, or the distance of the subdivision. And the issue there was that we had two ways in, but they were not remote enough from each other to allow the east half to develop. And so the second way in had to be farther away from the first way in to allow that to the second part to develop. And so our, our view is just that this is, this is a development that has access on the west and it has emergency access on the north, but it has no access at all from the south or the east. And we just think it's prudent to plan for a point for access on the south.
To Mr. Dunn's point, is this a preference or is this code? Do we know fire code on that?
We have, we have not run the calculation and we, we do not know that it's, it's fire code. It's based on, it's, I can call it a preference. At this point, it's discretionary. It's a judgment call for the planning commission. You can require it even if it's not a strict code requirement, if you think it's just good public safety. And you can, you can say that it's not a requirement and then it would be incumbent on the fire marshal to demonstrate how it is actually required by code. We're just, we're just trying to be consistent with what the original 2010 review was and be faithful to that.
So could we make the requirement then, if we approve the current plating with the condition that is there, provided that it is required per code from the fire marshal? And if it's not required by code, then it's not going to be required access? Would be an option. It would be there if it's truly required.
Yes. But even if it's not strictly required, you have the discretion as reviewer and approver of plats to decide that it, it's needed for public safety.
Right. Thoughts? Good question.
I'm all about safety. I, I, I think it's prudent. I would say as a resident out there, I would be talking to the developers about an entrance on Schilling as well, just for convenience sake. But I know that's not where we are at this point.
Yeah. The main, from a planning standpoint, the main, the main advantage is if it's an emergency access, it will always be there and available. If it's a private lot and dwellings get built there, then your, your opportunity to ever connect to Schilling for emergency or other access is gone. This is the one chance to reserve a space in there for future access.
Well, in my crystal ball, by the time that the sand pit gets emptied out at the end of Schilling, I'm sure that's going to turn into development lots and the city's going to expand farther south.
Right.
Someday that's going to be a road. That you're going to want.
Yeah. And just from me kind of looking at the plating initially and just going through was like, that was kind of my thought initially through there is just for the emergency access, I think I would feel better with it being there. Is that a motion?
I'm trying not to do motions since I'm acting as chair today, but I've already done it once, so I would...
I'll make a motion to approve P10-1B with the caveat that we provide the emergency access off Schilling at the location we have discussed.
So, the six recommendations on page 10.
Okay, thank you.
Page 10?
Page 10, yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
All right. And is that the, is that the emergency access that is delineated in the 2010 plat? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
That, when we reviewed this with the fire marshal, he, he referenced, and I, if you can see it there, Dustin referenced Lot 7, Block 2, which is roughly where it was before. So, you may, I think Dustin has his cursor there. That is the location where it was on the 2010 plat.
So, motioned and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, carries 5-0.
I don't, I think maybe we could go one more item and then it would be the discretion of the chair, whether you want to take a brief recess to, to conclude your agenda. But since item 3.4 is related to Stone Lake, I think this kind of just blends in with what we discussed. So, with the chair's permission, we'll go to 3.4. And that is an item that is a request to rename four street segments in the Stone Lake area. And Dustin has a map here. I think the application that was submitted refers to confusion is, is part of the reason. And we've, we've provided you with background as to how streets get named. Streets gets named on a plat. And then we look at the plat to make sure that the street name is not a duplication of a city or county street because the city and county share a 911 emergency response and we can't have a street name in the county that's the same as the street name in the city because then we'll get confusion as to where to respond. But obviously, we use street names for the official street map. We use that to assign addresses for water service, gas and electrical service. It's used for 911 emergency response. It's also used for mail delivery. So, once a street is built and it has a name, then we work with the street department to fabricate a street sign and it gets erected at the intersection. There's also ways to change a street name. A subdivision developer can, or residents may petition to change the street name. The planning commission or city commission can initiate a change or a city department, such as police or fire department, if there's been a confusion or duplication can initiate that. We gave an example of the fire department initiating a street name change in the 90s. There was also a change that was done in 2004. We had segments of what was Mariposa Drive and East Cloud Street, and those were all changed to Cedar Ridge Drive at the request of the developer. So, at the start of this, we really addressed the street naming side of things, but we didn't address the addressing side of things. So, the original design basically had Shoreline Drive going all the way around the lake and then Crystal Lake Drive went in three different directions along the west side of the subdivision. So, what we had to do in order to avoid addressing conflicts is we started adding suffixes to Shoreline Drive. And so, we started assigning addresses for new homes, Shoreline Drive West, Shoreline Drive North, Shoreline Drive South, to avoid some confusion with the addressing and, and street intersection signs and with mail delivery. So, the Stone Lake Development's taken notice of this and they are proposing to change the names of four street segments. And one at the north up here, this is Crystal, Crystal Lake Drive. At this point, it turns into Shoreline Drive North. It comes around and this isn't built yet. This is Shoreline Drive here. And so, they're proposing that the segment from here to here become North Shore Drive. Then this unbuilt segment here, they're proposing that this become Pura Vita Drive instead of Shoreline Drive East. And that this section, starting at this curve here, becomes Vista Sur Drive and goes over to where Crystal Lake Drive turns north. And then the fourth segment is what would be Shoreline Drive South. And so, we kind of identified this at the time the original plat was done. But we got some resistance on, on coming up with additional street names. But right now, we have homes built up here. This is Crystal Lake Drive. If we have homes built down here, those are going to be in the exact same 100 block east-west. And so, you would have a situation where you could have a home here and a home here that is on Crystal Lake Drive and has the same address as a home up here, and that's really not acceptable. So, changing this, there's just not enough addresses to go around to have all of this be Crystal Lake Drive. And the same thing's going to happen here. We have homes here with existing addresses. And this area down here is in the same 100 block east-west and we will simply run out of addresses that don't duplicate each other. So, from an addressing and EMS response standpoint, these, these changes will actually reduce some confusion and addressing conflicts. So, we've looked at the four street names. They don't conflict with any existing street names within the city. However, you should not recommend approval of a street name change request without all the owners of property receiving notice of that name change and having an opportunity to be heard. So, we sent notice to all the owners of property with frontage on these street segments. And the purpose of today's hearing is to give potentially affected property owners an opportunity to provide input on the proposed changes. We identified 18 property owners other than Stone Lake Development LLC that would potentially have a change in address or change in street name. So, primary impact on the city would be fabrication and installation of new street signs and then updating the street map and updating emergency dispatch records. Obviously, the impact on existing property owners is that they're, they would probably retain the same address numbers, but the street name in front of their houses would change or in front of their vacant lots. So, we don't see any reason not to recommend the four street name changes. They would eliminate potential future addressing conflicts that have only been put off by the fact that those, those segments haven't been built yet to create the, the built-in conflicts. So, we have had some discussions with the new developers about those potential addressing conflicts. So, that, I'd be open to any questions. Obviously, we have the developers of Stone Lake here, if you have questions of them.
Questions for staff?
Was the U.S. Postal Service contacted?
They have not been contacted. What we have is a, and it's, I guess it's, it's something that we remind people of every day, but the postal service does not assign addresses. The city assigns addresses and then the postal service is supposed to use the addresses we assign. And so, what we have on the process of an address or a street name changes, we have a list of 17 agencies that have to be notified if an address or a street name changes because we have so many parties that are dependent on the city for addressing. That includes Kansas Gas, Evergy, AT&amp;T, Cox Cable, the County Appraiser. So, anytime there's a change, they all have to be notified so they can update their records.
And you said all of the residents that were affected have been notified?
We sent mailed notice to every owner who had frontage on these segments. And so, there are some, like over here where 100% of the lots are owned by Stone Lake and then we have lots up here where people have already bought lots and built homes. And so, there's, there's a mix. But we identified 18 property owners that we sent letters to that were not Stone Lake Development.
All right. So, at this point, I guess we go back to comments by the applicant, if there are any?
Yeah, we would see if we have any comments from Stone Lake Development LLC, the reasons, what they're trying to accomplish, and then hear any public comments.
Give me your name again?
No.
No.
The biggest thing is to just get rid of the confusion out there. It's just been really confusing for all the people. I hate it for all the people on Shoreline Drive North and a few on Crystal Lake Drive, but I think this is the best solution. It's just going to get worse when we get around the lake and it's probably the best option. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Comments from public?
Do you have anyone on Zoom currently that would like to speak on this matter?
So, we're going to close public comment and then bring it back up to the commission?
The, the, and I'm trying to think of the most recent precedent from in terms of impact, but we had a, a situation where the road that led from Centennial Road to the Salina Airport Terminal was called Bailey Road. And we, that was switched to Arnold Avenue to make it easier for people to find the terminal. And so, we did have some affected owners there, but that, that change has seemingly gone well. What is unusual here is just when you have, you know, when you change a street name and there's no, no one there and there's, the lots are all vacant, that's one thing. When you change a street name from someone that's already residing there, then what would occur if you were to recommend these four changes is that we would, it would go to the city commission. They would consider adopting an ordinance that changed those names. The ordinance would get recorded in the deeds office, so there was a record of that. And then we would do our notification of both the individual owners and the 17 agencies that I referenced. So, it is, it's, it's not necessarily a simple thing. It sounds simple to change a street name, but it's, there's a lot of moving parts. And so, that's, that's why we have the notice and have the hearing. So, there's, there's an opportunity to be heard on that.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move we recommend approval of the four plotted street name changes as requested in application M 22-6.
A second.
So, we've got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That carried 5-0. And I would make a recommendation that we take a five-minute break.
Second.
Okay, that's chair's discretion. Announce a break. Announce a break.
Pull the meeting back to order. So we are to...
3.5.
3.5. Yep, 3.5, application Z 22-8 and P 15-3B.
Yes, we're continuing our theme on the combined request to rezone property and to plat property. And so the request we have here is to plat and zone the remainder of what's referred to as Magnolia Hills Estates. And this property essentially is running along the west side of Holmes Road, south of or north of Magnolia Road. And so you have Magnolia Hills Estates. And then the next phase is Magnolia Hills Estates Number Two that extends to the east of that. And then this is east of that. And it also includes what I'm referring to in the staff report is a peninsula that extends off of that and runs along Holmes Road down to Magnolia. And so you have the First Covenant Church there. And then between First Covenant Church and Holmes Road is that, that peninsula area. So the application is to rezone vacant agricultural zone land to R1 and R2 for the next development phase. There's a total of 116 lots in this development phase. We have Magnolia Hills Estates Number Two that you see highlighted with the R1 there. And then to the north, you have a rural home site. To the east, you have Holmes Road and cultivated land. Then you have the First Covenant Church and Magnolia Road on the south. And you've got pasture land on the south side of Magnolia. So this area has been proposed for plating a number of times. It's been held up mostly because of issues related to the improvement of Holmes Road. The only part that's new here is that this includes that 16-acre peninsula that's east of the church. So they're proposing a mix of R1 and R2 zoning with R1 to the north. And the 16-acre peninsula, it's got 54 lots, would be zoned R2 for townhomes or single family. And so the single-family portion, there's two streets, Ridge Hill and Stone Post. Those would be extended over to tie into Holmes Road. And then there would be a street connection to the south here for this, this peninsula area. So at one time Frank Norton owned all this property. And he sold 34 acres to First Covenant Church. And that was platted in 2005. And then the applicants in this case purchased 40 acres to the north. And then they completed buying the rest of the acreage. And this was all annexed in either year 2000 or 2005. And so this, and I think we have a map, Dustin, that shows the, the two request areas, the R1 and the R2. There, there was a, yeah, so this, this just, well, that's the phasing. There's another drawing that shows the requested zoning pattern. Maybe the one on the far right. But the, we've kind of highlighted the distinctions between R1 and R2 zoning there. And I know you do in your packets have the drawing or map that shows what part they're requesting R1 for and what part they're requesting R2 for. But again, this is a piece of property that's benefited from the sewer interceptor line that runs right through the property and then east of Holmes Road. So we have opportunity for gravity sewer service. And we have two distinct drainage basins on the property. One is kind of to the northwest, one is kind of to the southwest. And they both converge together. And there's, if you're familiar with the area, there's a lot of terrain difference and slopes. And so the, there's quite a bit of opportunity for high-velocity runoff. They are, they are next to the, the gravity portion of the interceptor sewer line. So they're, they're well-served there. And the character of the surrounding neighborhood is, is residential. And the closest urban-type subdivisions that aren't Magnolia Hills would be the Valley View Estates up the hill to the northwest. And then to the, directly to the north of this is, if you've driven by Markley Road, you're seeing streets and utilities going in that, that area directly to the north, which is Wheatland Valley. And so there is a lot of ag land in the vicinity. But we believe that construction of single-family homes and two-family homes at an urban density would be compatible with the existing zoning pattern. Even with the townhome area, the density proposed is right at 3.6 units per acre, which is pretty on the low, low side. The church is a large institutional use. And so if you look at future uses, having townhomes between the church and Holmes Road, which is a future arterial street, is a good buffer use. And so we have good water supply in the area. You can see there's a, a water line here. I think the only item of note relating to utilities is that there's a need to take this line, which is a 16-inch that ends here, and extend that up to Holmes Road. And then we would have, that would serve this area and then tie these networks together. So we would have a loop system with two sources of flow and very good fire protection. Storm drainage is provided by a pond that's already been excavated up in this corner. And the primary issue with this property has always been related to Holmes Road. So neither Markley Road or Magnolia Road are built to city street standards, but they are paved and they're in good condition. And they're capable of carrying urban levels of traffic. But Holmes Road is not. And so historically, there's been a trigger that says if traffic counts exceed 225 vehicles a day, that would trigger a requirement that Holmes Road be paved. And so we think that the 116 lots can be safely and efficiently served by the two access points going back to Markley and then the two new access points on Holmes, as well as the third access point on Magnolia Road. And so at full buildout, there would be a little over 1,000 vehicles per day traffic generated from this area. But that's going to be dispersed to Holmes, to Magnolia, and back west to Markley Road. This zoning request, the density is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so we've provided some findings on page eight and nine in support of the application that relates to the R1 and R2 zoning. And one thing that has factually changed since this has come before, the planning commission before, is that there's now a benefit district that's been created for a portion of Holmes Road. And because that benefit district is now in place, staff believes that a finding can be made by the planning commission that adequate public facilities will be in place to serve this 46-acre site because the timing of those improvements is now under the city's control. So your options as it relates to the rezoning request would be to recommend approval of the R1 and R2 zoning as submitted, subject to satisfactory plating of the property. You could recommend approval of a less intense change to R1 for the entire subdivision. You could recommend consideration of this be postponed to a future meeting to allow the applicant or staff to provide additional information. Or you could recommend denial of the request. Our recommendation would be that consideration of the request be, of the proposed plat, those two be tied together. So we don't think that there, any action should be taken on the rezoning request until and unless all issues associated with the preliminary plat have been satisfactorily resolved. So we have the twin items here. I guess the question would be if any planning commissioners saw anything related to the plat itself that you thought was a fatal flaw, we should discuss that before you make a recommendation on the zoning. But if you didn't see anything associated with the plat that goes with this that you think should cause a pause, then it would be appropriate to make a recommendation on the zoning change and then to discuss the plat.
Questions for staff?
I had no significant issues with the plating.
I don't either.
I don't either.
When, when you talked about drainage, you said that a pond had already been placed there. But then in the plat, there's houses there. How does that work?
Could you go to the plat, Dustin? So this, this is Holmes Road right here. So we may have to flip back and forth between the aerial photo. This is Holmes. This is Ridge Hill Drive coming down to tie into Holmes. This is Stone Post Lane coming here. This right here is a detention pond.
Okay.
And the pond was already built as part of this subdivision. So it's, it's already there. And so there's not a need to construct a pond as part of this plating phase because it's already there. And so this is, requires a little bit of jigsaw puzzling to put these pieces together. But the, the pond is already there and it was already designed in size to take care of this property. So our recommendation would be to approve the, the zoning request as requested. And so if, if there's, we would, it's a public hearing on the zoning request. We'd want to make sure we provided opportunity for public comment before any recommendation was made on the zoning.
We do not have anyone on Zoom interested in speaking on this matter.
And we have any public comment? Can we hear, so we will take it back.
Do applicants have anything they want to say about zoning?
I'm stand by Chris Salina. I guess the only thing I have to say is I, I hope you like what we've come up with for, for the rest of this property. Other than that, I'll take questions.
I don't have any further questions.
Looks good to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Looks good.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve application Z 22-8 for the zoning request.
Okay. So motion?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. So that's Z 22-8, right?
Correct. And then the companion item with that is the plat that's been submitted that we did have up on the screen. And so just, just by way of summary, if we start from west working east, we had first Magnolia Hills Estates was developed along Markley Road. And that's 40 acres and it's got 96 lots in it. Then what, you're not seeing any housing there, but there is houses now in Magnolia Hills Estates Number Two. This is a dated aerial photo. So within that area, there's, it covers 19 acres and there's 45 lots. And then the remainder, which is what we're talking about now, is 46 acres and would have 116 lots. So if we look at the whole universe of Magnolia Hills Estates, it covers 106 acres and ultimately would have 257 residential building lots. So this phase has 116 lots. 62 would be for single families, 52 for two-family. We provided quite a bit of history there because this, this got delayed a number of times. The planning commission actually approved a preliminary plat for this east area in 2017. But at the time, we still didn't have everything ironed out with Holmes Road. So the developers came back and said, well, we'd like to final plat, just that middle portion, which was determined to be more attributable to the Magnolia Road or to Markley Road benefit area instead of Holmes. So a scaled-down final plat was approved in 2018. So now we have a resolution for Holmes Road. And we're, we're going all the way to Holmes Road with this plan. And we have that access requirement that exists that requires at least one way in and emergency access if determined to be needed. In this case, the planning commission determined that two access points were needed from Holmes Road and can be provided. And so there, the plat shows both Stone Post Lane and Ridge Hill Drive connecting to Holmes Road. And so we have access on the west and we have access on the east, two connection points to Holmes Road plus a connection to Magnolia Road. So our, our street access is quite good. And all the internal streets would be public streets with 33 feet of paving. All of the right-of-way dimensions conform with city standards. There's 23 lots that abut or back up to Holmes Road and four lots that would back up to Magnolia Road. But there would be no individual driveways provided on Holmes or Magnolia for those lots. As far as looking at the street names, the only one that we wanted to call to your attention is there's a north-south street right here that runs up into the north area. And that proposed street name is Fox Ridge Drive. Right now, within the city, we have Fox Borough Drive, which is over near the Aeroplanes Development. And we have Fox Tail Drive, which is right off of Markley Road. So street names are within the planning commission's discretion. So it is within your discretion to decide whether Fox Ridge Drive is too similar to existing street names. We also have a Fox Run subdivision, but there's no streets in there named Fox Run. So the only thing that we saw that was close to being similar or conflicting with another street name was Fox Ridge. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention so that you can make a decision about that. We've discussed how this area is served by water and sewer. Markley Road is a two-lane former county road that was annexed in 2012. It's in good condition and there's no plans to widen or rebuild that section in the future. The street network here generally conforms to the topography. We've got two connections out, out there to Holmes. And so there's really no issues related to fire protection, police protection, or that, wanted to clarify that even though this is in the south, the eastern portion of the city, it is within the Lakewood and Central Enrollment Areas. And so at, at full buildout, there would be somewhere between 1,015 and 1,160 vehicles a day if the whole area is fully developed. But these are going to be dispersed west, east, and south. And so the developers are proposing to develop this subdivision in phases from west to east. And so the timing of when a physical connection to Holmes is required is when traffic on Holmes Road exceeds 250 vehicles a day. So that's going to mean on Phase Three, and I think we have their phasing plan, Dustin. So Phase Two and Phase One don't have a physical connection to Holmes. This Phase Three will have a physical connection to Holmes. At that time, a physical connection, that's going to trigger the improvement of Holmes Road. Road, and we'll get into that in a little more detail. The pond that's there has already been dedicated to the city and a maintenance fee is paid, so the pond is taken care of. And so in terms of improvements, they're going to be responsible for putting all their internal streets in, sidewalks on both sides of those streets. The Public Works Department is looking at a 10-foot hike bike path here along Holmes Road. And I wanted to note that the city, rather than the developers, is going to be responsible in taking the lead on designing Holmes Road. And so the developers here will be responsible for designing the internal improvements, but the city will take the lead and responsibility for designing Holmes Road. They don't need to design or build a detention pond, because it's already there, and they don't need to pay any fees associated with that. And so the city's responsibility is going to be long-term maintenance of that pond, and then the city's proportionate share of improving Holmes Road. So I've got a couple of slides, Dustin, that relate to the Holmes Road benefit area and a slide, and we'll, we wanted to, so this map here represents the benefit area for Holmes Road. This is Magnolia. This is the north end of that quarter section. So all the property east and west would, except for the church, would be included in that benefit area. So this property and this property would be part of that benefit district. So if you could scroll further, Dustin. So the estimated project cost at this point in time, which has probably increased slightly at this point, is that building that section of Holmes Road would cost about $2 million. And based on proportionality, this subdivision would be responsible for a little over 31% of that cost. So 31% of that cost attributable to the subdivision would be this amount here, and that improvement would give us an interim street standard, which would have six to eight inches of pavement. There would be no curb and gutter on that section of Holmes, and there would be a sidewalk on the west side. And so again, the city would be taking the lead on design, and the city would be up fronting about 69% of the cost of that improvement, and these developers would pay 31% of that cost. And that, that would be triggered upon a physical connection to Holmes Road. So right now, their first phase has 19 lots, and it would self-loop with Ridge Hill Drive, Stone Post Lane, and Deer Hollow Lane. And they've historically used special assessment financing for Magnolia Hills, and we wouldn't expect that to be any different. There's already a benefit district formed to reconstruct Holmes Road, and that included the county property on the east, so we'd have an equitable sharing of costs. So our, our proposed densities are suburban residential. This is shown as a future growth area for the city. And Holmes Road is shown as a minor arterial, and we will have connectivity back to Markley Road here. And if you've watched developments along Markley Road, there's a hike bike path along Markley that's taking shape and will be extended north. So we're trying to improve connectivity there. So we have found this plat to be in conformance with the preliminary plat criteria. So we would recommend approval of this plat. If you agree that Holmes Road is the direct access perimeter street for this subdivision, and any issues that you've identified have been satisfactory resolved. We've got seven, let's see if we've got, we've got 11 recommended conditions that are on the page 12 and 13 of your report. So our recommendation is to approve this with the layout as submitted, understanding that we now have a, a financial solution in place for, and timing under city's control for improving Holmes Road, which has been the obstacle to getting this all platted for the past several years. So with that, we'd be open to any questions that you have.
Dean, did you say that the sidewalk on the west side of Holmes there would be similar to what's on Markley, the 10?
That's what the Public Works Department is looking at in terms of, rather than starting out with just a sidewalk, looking at, it's, it's going to be a minor arterial street. So since the project is going to be under the city's design, they're looking at incorporating that into the initial design.
I think that's a great idea.
On the internal, Dean, the sidewalk width is four?
Yes. So if you're a typical dwelling on Stone Post Lane or Ridge Hill Drive, you're going to have a four-foot sidewalk constructed in front of your house.
And the $2 million cost for Holmes improvement, is that just for this section, or does that connect all the way to Crawford?
That is just for the section that goes up to the north edge of this subdivision. So that, this, this line right here is the quarter section line, and so it's from here up, up to this point here, and then it's a whole other mile to get up to, well, it's actually more than a mile to get up to Crawford. And that's, that's a separate project. But the, the design contract that's, the city's moving forward with would be to have a design for Holmes Road from Magnolia all the way to Country Club Road. So that as things develop and as that, we already have a design in place, and if we're fortunate enough to get some other source of funding or whatever, then we can build more road, but at least we'd have a design ready if the funding opportunities come, so.
Hope you find the funding. Any questions for staff? Okay. Any comments from the applicant? And you do not need to say your name again.
Okay.
Just thanks for looking at our plan. It's been a long time to get to this point. We've spent a lot, a lot of time out there. Started this in 2005, and we're really happy with the homes that we have out there, the neighborhood we have out there, and we like the design we have and looking forward to getting to the end of it.
Any questions for applicant?
Thank you.
Any comment, anybody on line, Dustin?
We do not have anyone on Zoom at the moment.
Okay. So we'll close, public comment, and?
I'm sure Mr. Byquist has the same observation, but I look back, and this is the ninth staff report I've written on Magnolia, this part of Magnolia Hills Estates, and Mr. Byquist has had to sit through most of those presentations.
All right. We'll bring it back up to the commission for a discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to, on application P15-3B to approve that with the 11 conditions on page 12 and 13.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that carries 5-0.
So we have one more item, which was advertised public hearing for amendment to the Presbyterian Manor Plan Development District. And we went ahead and advertised that and then was informed by representatives of Presbyterian Manor that they wanted to request postponement to your 21st meeting to allow them to be present in person. So the appropriate action would be to open the public hearing on that item, see if there's any public comment, and if not, have a motion to postpone consideration to the June 21st meeting. We did have some residents of Quail Hollow here waiting patiently, but we were able to answer their questions during the recess, and so they left with their questions. And they, they may, they may come back on the 21st. But if there's no one here in person, and you say there's nobody there?
Nobody online.
Okay. So then if we have no public comment, then it would be appropriate to consider a motion to postpone consideration of that application to your June 21st meeting.
I move we postpone application PDD 86-2E until the June 21st meeting.
Second.
All right. And motion and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carries 5-0. So that should then take us up to unfinished or other business.
So now that you postponed that, you now know that you have a meeting on 21st. So we will meet on the 21st, and we have that, and then we have an application. I keep thinking of it as Coyote Canyon, and then became the Kansas Buffet, but we have a application to take that building, remove it from the site, and replace it with a tidal wave auto spa car wash. And so that, that would be an amendment to the Central Mall Plan Development District. So those, those two items are on your agenda for the 21st. So we will meet again. So that's really the main, main thing that we would have, and then other than, we wanted to inform you that the city was taking the lead on the design for Holmes Road. So I don't, I don't think we have anything unless you have any questions for us about prior business or applications or anything that you want to bring up as other business for staff to be aware of, but we don't have anything for you.
I don't. Anybody? Nope. Okay. Assuming there's still nobody online and public comment, if not, we'll close it and make a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hopefully not.